Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order, the Cloverdale Planning Commission. I pledge allegiance to the Commissioner Waggy. Lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the nation of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the great majority of judges and all.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Dermot Shanahan.
Here.
Commissioner A.C.
Here.
Commissioner Holberts.
Here.
Commissioner Springer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waggy.
Yes.
For the record, Commissioner Sanders is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda review, changes, deletions. Decreations, conflict of interest. Do we have any on the deal? None, thank you. Public comment, under this item, citizens may speak on matters within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction which are not on the agenda. The Planning Commission is prohibited, under public meeting law, from acting on matters that are not on the agenda. However, the Commission may take citizens' input under advisement, direct staff to place the matter on for future agenda or for discussion and/or possible action, or refer matters to staff for follow-up. Members of the public may comment on any matter not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes.
I see no hands.
No hands, thank you. And we have none in the chamber. So we close public comment. Opens to consent calendar. We have two items this evening. We have the minutes of the regular planning meeting of October 7th, and we have a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cloverdale reauthorizing teleconference meetings in compliance with the Assembly Bill 361 to continue, allow members of the public safely participate in local government meetings. Have a motion to approve. Thank you. That's Commissioner Waggy making a motion to approve. Second, please. Commissioner Holberts for a second.
That was Waggy and Holberts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Waggy.
Hi.
Commissioner Holberts. Commissioner A.C.
Hi.
And Chairman Shanahan. I'm missing somebody.
Commissioner Spangler.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, can generally hear us, but it's better, I think, if we're off the mics a little bit and not right into them. We've done a lot of testing, so that seems to be the best way.
We're better now.
Best we can.
Okay, non-public hearings, we have none at this time. Moves us to our public item, which is item number three.
Okay, Lori, do you mind putting up the first PowerPoint? We do have a PowerPoint. We did receive four correspondents on this item that we forwarded to you via email. Richard St. Angelo, Kelsom Weeks from Generation Housing, a letter from Core Zone of Healdsburg, and Jen Allen, resident of Cloverdale. Also with us, we have Alex Mog, who's our, the Myers-Navee attorney who gave us a housing update a few months back, as well as Stephen Van Sant from Coastland Engineering, who did all the conditions of approval from the engineering realm. And Stephen's really just here to answer any questions. Next slide. So our agenda is, we're going to have Alex give us just a quick update on what we learned last time about the new housing laws and how that might relate to this project. We have one slide on our RENA numbers, just to give you an idea of where we are in the current RENA. And then we're going to talk about the entitlements that's being sought by this project. And then we're going to turn it over to the project proponent, who's going to give us more of a detailed presentation on the project itself with some pictures and just more of the architecture and the site layout. And then I want to bring it back to this PowerPoint where I've laid out some discussion points for the Commission to consider to help guide the conversation. So, next slide. So Alex, can you hear us? And you're on mute. Hopefully you can hear us and you can take it away.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Commissioners. Like Kevin mentioned, we'll do just a quick refresher, a much condensed version of our presentation.
Presentation that I gave a few months ago, just to refresh the Commission's recollection on sort of the major housing laws that govern how the city processes and considers housing applications. So, next slide, please. The first thing before we dive into the laws itself is just to clarify, we use the term, I'll use the term "objective" and "subjective" a lot, and to clarify what those mean. So an objective standard is a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official or a commission or a city council, and that are uniformly verifiable. So that's something like a density requirement or a height requirement, you know, saying something has to be less than 16 feet tall. That's an objective requirement. Subjective standards involve personal or subjective determination. So you, if you talk to different people, they might think different things about whether a standard is met. So a very common example of this would be that a project conforms with the neighborhood character. That is subjective because different people might reach different conclusions on that. And you could see situations where this might differ, you know, height, for example, a 16-foot height limit, that's objective. But to say that the height must be similar to other surrounding buildings, that would be subjective because similar isn't something that everyone would agree on what that means. Next slide. Thank you. So the first law we're going to talk about is the Housing Accountability Act. Next slide, please. So the Housing Accountability Act is a large law, and it's been on the books for a while, but in recent years, it's been used more and more by developers and also non-developers can invoke the Housing Accountability Act. And the main, the central tenet of the law is that a jurisdiction, you know, the city cannot disapprove of a housing project or approve it at a lower density than how it is proposed if that project complies with all applicable objective standards in place at the time the application is deemed complete. That is the sort of the general rule. There are some exceptions to that, but the general rule is the city has to approve, cannot reject, and can't approve at a lesser density projects, housing projects that comply with all the city's adopted objective standards. And if there isn't, if there is inconsistency, the city has to notify the applicant pretty quickly on what those inconsistencies are. Next slide. So the city can only deny a project that meets all of the objective standards if the preponderance of the evidence in the record demonstrates, so, you know, there's a significant amount of evidence in the record that demonstrates that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, and that there's no feasible method to mitigate or avoid the adverse impact. And a specific adverse impact isn't just anything that, you know, on an ad hoc basis, someone decides, you know, that's not great, that could cause some harm. It has to be something that is quantifiable, that has a quantifiable impact, that's based on objective standards that have been adopted by the city. Next slide, please. So that's a really high, just one more point, that's a really high standard to meet, you know, not impossible, but it's not going to be met in the typical situation. In recent cases have upheld the broad application of the Housing Accountability Act. There have been a sort of a relatively large number of lawsuits recently regarding this law, where developers or so-called YIMBY groups, yes-in-my-backyard groups, have sued cities alleging violations of this law, and the cities have almost uniformly lost. And when the city loses the challenge, the city likely has to pay plaintiff's attorney's fees. So you may have seen there was some recent, you know, press about the city of San Mateo losing a housing lawsuit that was related to the Housing Accountability Act, and the city of San Mateo, you know, ultimately, I think, agreed to pay something like $700,000 in legal fees to the challengers. I would just note, the Housing Accountability Act prevents the city from rejecting a project or approving it at a lesser density, but it does not prevent the city from imposing conditions of approval on the project. At some point, you know, a condition of approval might be so onerous as to be equivalent to a denial, but in general, you know, the city still has authority to impose conditions of approval on projects. Next slide, please. So the density bonus law is the other law we will talk about tonight, and this is a law that the legislature has passed to incentivize the construction of affordable housing without financial contributions from local or governments or the state. So, next slide, please. To simplify, you know, sort of as a basic summary, what the density bonus law does is it says that developers who build a certain percentage of affordable units in their project are entitled to a specific density bonus. And state law sets out sort of a specific chart that says, you know, determines how big the bonus will be. In general, the greater the percentage of affordable units that are provided, the larger density bonus will be, and the greater, the deeper the affordability of the units, the larger the density bonus will be. So if someone is providing 15% of the units as affordable, that will be less of a density bonus than if someone's providing 25 units of the project as affordable. So just by way of example, if a project is 20 units an acre and the developer, if the city, excuse me, if the city's zoning code establishes that a parcel's density is 20 units an acre, that's the maximum density, and under the density bonus law, the developer has built enough units or is going to build enough units in the project to qualify for a 10% density bonus, that means that the project could have a density of up to 22 units an acre. So that would be an increase of 2 units an acre that the developer would be entitled to over and above what is allowed by the zoning code. And like I, we just talked about, the Housing Accountability Act requires approval of projects that are consistent with objective, the state's objective zoning standards. The receipt of a density bonus does not make a project inconsistent with the zoning standard for the purposes of the Housing Accountability Act. So if the reason a developer is, if the reason the application is above or exceeds the standards set on the zoning code is because they've received a density bonus, they're still considered consistent with the zoning code. Next slide, please. So in addition to, in addition to density bonuses, qualifying projects are also entitled to up to three incentives, depending on how much affordable housing they provide, and an incentive is a reduction in a sites-to-development standard or modification of some other requirement. So an example of this might be, you know, if the city's code said all units have to have balconies, and an incentive might be to waive that requirement, to get rid of that requirement, so a developer could build a project without balconies on it. The city is required to grant the incentive unless the proposed incentive would have an unavoidable adverse impact on health and safety, which is hard to demonstrate, and also would not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions, which is also generally hard to demonstrate because most of the requirements in the zoning code, you know, have some costs associated with them. Next slide, please. In addition, density projects are also entitled to waive any zoning standard that would physically prevent the project from being built at the permitted density and with the granted incentive. So to do a very extreme example, let's say there was a parcel, and under the city's code and under the density bonus, they were allowed to build, you know, 500 units an acre, you know, just by way of example. If there was a height limit on the parcel of 10 units an acre, of 10 feet, excuse me, obviously it'd be pretty much impossible to fit 10, 500 units on an acre if you could only build 10 feet tall. And so a waiver would be to waive the height limit to build as tall as necessary to accomplish that density of 500 units an acre. And lastly, the density bonus also, in addition to all of these things that a project receiving a density bonus is entitled to, density bonus projects are also subject to maximum parking requirements. So without, notwithstanding whatever the city's code says, the density bonus law provides certain requirements for density bonus projects, the maximum amount of parking that can be required to provide. And an applicant can actually lower that amount even more through the use of one of their incentives. So they're automatically entitled to this amount of parking, and if they need to lower it even more, they can use one of their incentives for that purpose. So the density bonus law, you know, mandates a lot, gives a lot to people, applicants who are providing affordable housing, and really preempts the city's authority and ability to deny some of these requests under state law. So with that, next slide. Yes, that was a quick refresher. I'm happy to take any questions that any of the Commissioners may have regarding those two laws.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No questions.
Thank you.
Lori, could you put that back up?
Oh, yes.
I just, yeah, mine's next. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about kind of the rules and what we're looking to do after we talk about the RENA here. We've been talking about the RENA a lot here at the Commission, and we're still in the 2015-2022 period, and you can see where we are. And, you know, just so you know, I mean, you probably have seen that we've approved a lot of projects, but this is really, we have to count them at building permit stages. So there's a lot of projects out there that are approved that don't have building permits. And I just want to demonstrate here that where we were with the RENA. I wasn't intending to have a big conversation about this, but, next slide. So just real quick, and I know the applicant's probably going to go through this, so I won't spend a lot of time. It's about three and a half acres, it's flat, 75 units are proposed, 100% affordable, 30% to 60% AMI, three buildings, one, two, and three bedroom. As interesting is the LEED Platinum is being proposed, which is, we can talk, I'm sure they're going to talk about that, but that's ecological design, encompasses water use and energy use and all kinds of things. 101 parking spaces, we'll talk a little bit about what the standard was and where we got to 101, and kind of based on what Alex just talked about, the density bonus. Just quick on the amenities, we got, there's a community room, a fitness room, a kitchen with the community room, laundry, tot lot, community garden. Okay, thanks. Fence dog area, bocce ball, and I'm sure against the applicants, they're probably going to talk more about all the amenities, and it's walkable to downtown. So, next slide. So here's where it is, I think everyone's familiar. It is in the TOD zoning, so if you look in our zoning ordinance, and the main purpose of the TOD, this is pretty much the first line, is provide high-density residential. You know, it talks, it really had to do with the station area plan, and I'll talk about that in a second. It's to try to encourage more housing near transit, and of course, the Smart Train, we don't know when the Smart Train's coming, but zoning was put in place, you know, looking ahead many years on ways to support the Smart Train. Also, you can see in TOD, it says PP, it's a plot plan, so that's one of the entitlements they're looking for. There's one more thing under there, do you mind moving the faces? I think it just says design review. Yeah, and so the two things are the plot plan and the design review. The design review is really the big, the big part of what we're going to be asking the Commission to look at, to guide the conversation in that regard. Next slide. So I mentioned the station area plan, this was adopted in 2010, this project is within the station area plan, and you can see some of the goals stated in the station area plan and how this project does meet a lot of those goals that are within that plan. Close to downtown, to try to bring more people into downtown, reduce greenhouse gas emissions through transit, so you can kind of see some of the goals there and how this project meets those goals. Next slide. So the design review, again, Alex said that, you know, you may feel like your hands are tied a little bit, but we do have some flexibility in looking at the design and coming up with conditions of approval that the Commission might want to see. You know, the intent is really to promote high-quality design. I included in the slides, again, kind of a checklist matrix that we can walk through so that we can get your input on all the different aspects of the design of the project, and we'll do that after the applicant's presentation. Next slide. Also, it requires a plot plan, you know, we're looking to see that it's consistent with the general plan, won't be detrimental to public health, safety. These are real generic kind of findings that we do in planning all the time, compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and Alex kind of touched on that one. This is, our zoning code's a little out of date in terms of the objective design standards, but these are the findings that we made for plot plans. Next slide. So we did, Alex did mention the concessions, and we are, they are requesting, or I think we're pretty much obligated to grant them, but these are what the concessions are, the private open space. The standard is 60 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, but every unit is getting some private open space, it's just not all of them are getting the full 60. So I think two of the four, and you guys can come up and correct me if I get any of this wrong later, but two of the four models will have 45, 54 square feet as opposed to the 60. So everyone does get some private open space, it just doesn't meet our 60-foot standard on two of the four units. Elimination of the covered parking requirement, and then of course, the reduction in parking from what would have been required at 193 to 101. Next slide. There is one amendment that we'll ask for if we get to that point tonight in the resolution to include a portion of this APN, so that would be in the title. The applicant picked up on this and wanted to make sure that we included that this APN is in the title of the resolution along with the other APN. This is a portion of the neighboring one. So we're happy to include that if the Commission agrees with that, and it's really just kind of a technicality, there's no real reason not to. Next slide. So we do have a resolution recommending approval of the design review and the plot plan for the Alexander Valley Apartments. Lori, I don't know if you could load up the applicant's PowerPoint, and we'll let them take it away from here. David, could you let her know, because she can hear you better on that one.
Lori, we don't see, it's the same PowerPoint.
It's the PDF.
What's the same one?
No, no, it's a, I sent you two, it's, we need to load up the PDF one now.
The one I was on in the first place? Am I confused? Well, I lost it. Is it this one?
No, no, that's, that's the one we just went through. It's the, it's a PDF.
That's the one I just had up. Kevin, this one here is the PDF.
Hang on, Lori, I think-
Alexander Valley. Hold on a second.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. Yeah, you come on up and introduce your team.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, let me know if I need to move back or forward. Good evening, I've met some of you. I'm Lauren Alexander, I'm the project manager for the Pacific Companies on this project. I'll make some introductions here and then just go over a few points on the project before we go more into design details. So today I have here with me Doug Gibson, who is the Architect of Record, and Court Munsell, who's our Civil Engineer, and then we actually have part of our team available by Zoom to answer questions. We have Thomas Phelps, who's our Landscape Architect, Karen Massey, who's a planning consultant, and then Chris Butcher, who is our attorney. So they are available for questions if something comes up. Next slide. All right, I'm not used to, okay, so there's, there's our team. Next slide. Okay. Just a quick overview, the Pacific Companies is a multi-family development firm, it's vertically integrated, so we do everything from site acquisition through development and ownership and management of the assets, the projects, when they're completed. Currently, we have about 180 under management across the Western US. You can go to the next slide. Just to give you, so Pacific West Architecture is Doug Gibson's firm, they've done over 100 tax cutter projects in the Western US, which is about 6,000 units, and we've done many local projects. This is not a complete list, but just a few. We did the Healdsburg Glen Apartments in Healdsburg, Sonoma Gardens in Santa Rosa, there's actually one just down the street from there that's currently under construction called the Redwood Apartments, and then two in Ukiah, a senior project and a large family project, which is another LEED project. Next slide. So the staff report touched on some of this, and it was very thorough, so thank you guys for what you did. As the report states, the site is zoned, transit-oriented development, as you can see from this diagram here, it's about a half-mile walk from the site to downtown. The site is meant for high-density residential, and part of that is fulfilling the goals of the Smart Rail. It's sort of a back and forth, in order for the state to get, or the rail to get funding from the state, there- is the site plan, there are three buildings, Building A, B, and C. The project we're proposing to actually construct in two phases. Phase one would be putting in Buildings B and C, and then all of the parking for the entire development, and then later, coming back and doing phase two, which we'd be completing Building A, sorry. There's a few reasons for this, but one of the main reasons is the different financing programs that are available at different times. Currently, this is not finalized yet, but the plan is to secure farm worker housing funding for the first phase, which is 37 units, and then to have the second phase be just a general large family project, and in both cases, this would be for families earning between 30 and 60% of the area median income. If everything goes according to plan, the construction of phase one could start as early as the end of 2022, which might help fill in some context for the RENA numbers, and you'll be shifting again to a new plan in 2023, so I know you guys have a lot of projects in the pipeline and don't know when those will be started. Just a couple things about the projects that we do. TPC first tries to fill all of their developments with people who already live and/or work in town, on average, that ends up being about 80% of the units. That's just a practice that they have, it usually goes very well, in fact, don't even usually have to market the project much for people to find out about it and want to apply. Before I pass this over to Doug to go through some more of the design details, the, there were a couple of core principles that we looked at when, is it possible to flip that, rotate it? Not quite ready for that slide anyway, so while you work on that, I'll just continue. We wanted to make sure that the project respected the surrounding rural, you know, sort of area. We would be the first sort of larger project, transit-oriented development on this side of 101, so we're trying to preserve as much of the natural site elements as we can, which we'll show you here soon. It is going to be a LEED Platinum project, which Doug will go into more detail about, but that touches on a lot of the local concerns about water conservation, energy efficiency, talk about solar and different things there. And we also collaborated quite a bit with the fire department on fire and life safety issues with the site, which, you know, in our last check, they, they supported the design that we came up with in that, in that regard. So with that, I'll hand it over to Doug, we'll go through some more details on design, and then open up for questions. Thank you.
So can everybody hear me? Okay, so I guess the, the request would be to go back to the prior slide, if you would, showing the site plan. And then I can explain just a little bit more about some of the thought process in putting together the site. The previous one, but rotated 90, please, yeah, that guy, right there.
What happened? How did it turn?
Lori, it has not turned, you should be able to-
I don't know how it turned. Let me see if I can get it fixed here.
Right-click and click on the rotate clockwise.
There you go.
Stone.
Lori, I think I can do it from this end.
Okay, you want to try, because it's not turning for me. Let me get out of-
Okay, hold on one second.
There we go. Thank you.
Is this the one you're looking for?
Correct, yeah, so, so if I ask you to, next slide, then you'll be able to do that one? All right, great. So Doug Gibson, California Architect, Pacific West Architecture, have been working for the Pacific Communities for a little over 15 years. As Lauren alluded to earlier, have done in excess of 100 projects throughout the Western United States, including Alaska, Hawaii, Arizona, New Mexico, Idaho. Predominantly, the bulk of the work that we do is here in California. I'm also the Architect of Record on those four projects that Lauren made reference to, the two in Ukiah, one of the project photos was of Roanoke Park, which was a 218-unit project. We've done approximately a dozen lead projects for the Pacific Companies. Right now, we have four in construction, so our engineering team, our civil team, as well as our landscape architect, Tom Phelps, they're all very proficient in all of the requirements for LEED. In addition, as Lauren mentioned, the Pacific Companies is a vertically-integrated company, and the general contractor that builds their, their structures and their facilities, we work with consistently. So today, I was down in Marysville, Yuba City, all of first meeting with superintendents, and so the same people who are the superintendents and the subcontractors build the same projects again and again, and so we have a really good basis for our LEED program, and we'll get into that here in just a second. But before, I did want to kind of provide some orientation for the commission on the site and the site development. As you all know, I'm sure you've driven by the sites, it is flat, there are some undulations at the perimeter and at the edges of the site, and so when we put together the site initially, when we were consulting with the fire department, one of the main concerns was wildland fire safety. And so our design and the separation of the two entries along Asti, we worked specifically with the Fire Marshal and his staff to ensure that upon final completion of the both phase one and phase two of the project, that we would have a sufficient separation distance, not only for fire apparatus, but also for resident evacuation. That was one of our primary design parties when we put together the site plan. So in some of the renderings, you'll see a structure that looks like a bridge, and that's the southernmost entry point into the site, and that will be a bridge because of some of the areas that we're actually building over to protect for the long term. So we've got Court Munsel here, our Civil Engineer, so when we get to that, if there are any specific questions, he'll also be available to answer that. So before I go into the presentation, I just want to make sure that that was cleared up.
Sorry to interrupt you, I think we have to go back to Lori with the presentation, because the audience, people out in Zoom world can't see it.
It is available, it should be noted, it's available on YouTube for anybody who wants to watch it, so they can see the exact presentation.
Yeah, Lori, I'm sorry, we got to go back to your screen, because-
Well, not even we can see it. Oh, no, we can only see the faces. Right, if I was over here, I might be able to see, but I cannot see on our, there you go, now we can see.
Oh, it's not in there?
No.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
The, the problem is, if we don't show the share screen, the folks on Zoom can't see the-
Yeah, we can't see it either.
You can't see it right now either?
We can now, yes.
Can you see my screen?
Can now, no, we cannot, well-
Where would you like me to stop at?
So is this, is this the city clerk's screen then, now, so I can give a rec, okay, so please proceed up approximately two slides, I think back up to the site, and then we'll, we'll work our way back through them. Are you, are you going down?
Well, back the other way. This is forward.
Okay, well, we need to go back to the site plan, site.
Site plan.
Just keep going up. There we go, okay, so, completed the conversation about the site plan, so please go to the next slide.
Next slide.
Yes, please. Okay, so, the conversation I had about the bridge element that we have from Asti on to the southern portion of the site, so this landscape plan and this rendering has been coordinated, so we're making representation of what the riparian vegetation would be along Asti, and then the bioswale area beyond it, which is kind of the rape seed color plantings. What you wouldn't see in this rendering to the right side are the existing trees and landscaping, so we would have screened those out. So the reality of it is, you would, the existing landscaping that is there would remain within that riparian vegetation, so I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out. As, as part of the development, we were also concerned about making sure that we provided pedestrian access as well as the bike lane along the eastern portion of Asti, and so we're representing that as well. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is just an explanation, so if you look at the upper right where it says mature landscape screen, that's basically what you would see in the lower right-hand corner of the rendering. So the rendering's just a representation of what the project would look like, but we wanted to be honest in indicating that that's some of the existing foliage that you would see. Okay, next slide, please. This is a view if you were heading southbound on Asti, so the landscape plan to the left shows a little carrot-looking thing pointing what you would see if you were in a vehicle heading southbound. The purpose is, once again, to portray the massing of the structure, that building along Asti, which would be part of the second phase, how it articulates down to the south with, you know, multiple volumes, if you will, as well as articulation of the roof, and then how the landscape features would be integrated into that frontage component of the design. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view, so if you could imagine being kind of a little bit, maybe 150, 200 feet north of the project, looking down, to the left, we've got the central courtyard, which is adjacent to the community building, there's a little bit of a sloped hillside and existing oak to the left or to the northeast of the project, and then this is the main northerly entry point into the site. What I wanted to point out also was that yellow area to the north is a bioswale as well, so that would all be used as part of our LEED program to provide for that mitigation effect for any onsite water purification and/or clarifying before it goes into the groundwater plane. Okay, and then one other context is Railroad Avenue directly to the south, that's an existing private drive, so part of our design to connect into Asti was railroad drive wasn't allowed to us as an option for a secondary exit or design, so that's where we ended up with the site plan. Next slide, please, and I'll, I'll move along pretty quick, so I don't lose interest. Another view, but from the south, looking to the northeast of the project, existing riparian vegetation is noted. This is just to give you an idea of the context and the, and the actual location of the structures on the site, and how the Building A along Asti is functioning as a town home, or a townfront type of, townhouse, excuse me, type of facade. Next. So when we put together our materials and color boards for the project, we're using different types of materials, stone, wood materials, hardy siding, so it'll be ship lap, battened board, and then shingle siding, which is pretty consistent with most Northern California craftsman-type architectural styles, 30-year composite roof, trellis screens with plantings that would soften and provide relief at the base of the structure. This is the building that has the community building, which would be to the left-hand portion of the structure, so this is the one that's, it would be in the middle of the site, and we've got a couple other photos of it. We're also looking at like a limestone stone base as well, to make it a more durable product. All of the materials that we're specifying would be consistent with the LEED program as well for sourcing, delivery, as well as long-term longevity. All right, next slide, please. So the, the main focus, and what I've been asked to just make sure we're all grounded on, is the TOD requirements, you're all familiar with it, and I don't want to rehash a lot of it, but I just wanted to make sure that it's noted for the record that, you know, we really were focused on making it a walkable development, a walkable site that would be, you know, functioning to integrate into the existing infrastructure of the city. Row house appearance along Asti, or Asti Road, the community entrance is all about livability and creating a community for the residents, and then each one of the structures has its own different type of breezeway entrance, and so the intent is that the buildings have a little bit different feel, so residents have some identity in their structures. Next slide, please. So what I wanted to point out, and this was one of the comments about the size of the patios, so the larger, the larger units actually have larger patios in some instances, so when we were designing the structure, we wanted to make sure that there was enough articulation, and so that 54 square feet plus or minus to the 60-foot, it's spread throughout the different building types, so it's not like any one of the building type has a smaller-sized footprint, they're all varied throughout the project. Next slide, please. So these are just our standard two, three-bedroom units, there's enough variety in the building types and the different unit types to allow for a highly rentable product for the residents based upon family size. Next slide, please. And this is just kind of more getting into the architecture, central courtyard amenities, pergola, tot lot, bocce ball, all of those amenities are also required by the state tax credit, so there's a certain minimum that we have to meet or exceed, and so the specifications for these are all, are real consistent with what the state would require. And we find that those amenities are used quite a bit by the residents and their children, and we also like to place them just so, you know, near the community building, so as parents are doing laundry or doing activities at the community building, the kids are all fairly close. And we also, as a design component, we wanted to screen the tot lot and the play area from Asti, so we had a separation from any vehicular issues along that roadway. Next slide, please. So this would be coming into the project, that's the community building in front of you, and then Building A to the right was the one along Asti. Next slide. So the community building would be the, the focus of the, of the project, we've got onsite laundry, exercise, a large common gathering area with a non-commercial kitchen, so residents can have parties, kinsenerias, whatever that they want to have. There's also an onsite manager's office, and then, this design's fairly unique in that to the right, as they would go into the project, there's an enclosed covered mail area, because we think that mail is where a lot of residents would have that interaction with their neighbors, so we wanted to plan for a nice, safe, well-lit, secured area. Okay, next slide. And then, finally, Tom Phelps, who we've done 100 projects with, he's a very competent landscape architect, and so his design and the specifications would be consistent with the low-water use standards, as well as approved local varieties of plants, you know, any of the trees, species would be consistent with the city standards. Next slide. And we've noted it here, it would be Sonoma County's Low-Impact Development, LID, list, and as part of his work, he actually comes back and does water audits. It's really important for us that we exceed the state standards, so his, the software, the zoning, and all of the irrigation appliances that he produces is consistent with the highest level of water use and conservation, I guess that'd be the proper way. Next slide, please. And I'll just kind of move through these pretty quick, this is just kind of gives you an idea of the different types of design components for the project for landscape that meet the LEED water efficiency design. Next. Now, this is the, and I'll go through this quickly, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew- And we've noted it here, it would be Sonoma County's Low Impact Development, LID, list. And as part of his work, he actually comes back and does water audits. It's really important for us that we exceed the state standards. So his, the software, the zoning, and all of the irrigation appliances that he produces is consistent with the highest level of water use and conservation, I guess I'd do the proper way. Next slide, please. And I'll just kind of move through these pretty quick. This is just kind of gives you an idea of the different types of design components for the project for landscape that meet the lead water efficiency design. Next. Now, this is the, and I'll go through this quickly, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we had met with the fire department multiple times. And one of their concerns was ensuring that EMTs were safely provided with built-in evacuation chairs on second and third floors. Exhausted conversations with the fire chief to make sure that we provided that sort of appliance. It's all built in, it's in the design. And in addition, building A, which would be part of Phase Two, actually has an elevator built into it at the request of the fire marshal to make sure that as the project grows and expands to the second phase, we can be, you know, good partners in the development and provide for that as a utilization for the fire department and/or residents. Next slide, please. So as an energy-efficient design, the project's going to be built to net zero energy. That's part of the USDA 514 lead requirement. So the lead platinum comes as part of that financing source. I have a lead project AP in our office, Benjamin Peterson, who will be managing and supervising all of the lead performance specifications. The product has long-term, high-quality materials, the lighting, the water. Everything is designed for the highest level of energy conservation and water conservation as well. The solar design will be sourced, specified, and installed to be consistent with a net zero energy. And we have an in-house solar design manager now at Pacific Companies who assists us in all of the sourcing and integration of that product. So with that, I'll go to the next slide, which is a, thank you very much. And I'll stand ready for any questions or make the team available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any immediate questions? Under report?
Yeah, I do. So one question I couldn't pick off the plans, but there are some older train tracks that go on the southeast side of the property line. Is it on the property line or is that off of the property line?
I can address that. Those are off the property line.
They are on the property?
They are off, off of the property.
Off of the property?
Yep.
And is the city, are we planning on using those tracks in the future? Are those going to be abandoned?
I believe those tracks were serving the, is that all coast?
The lumberyard there?
I don't think the city has any plans to use them, but there is the possibility of freight along the smart rail, but that's years out. Are there questions under report?
Does the sidewalk extend all the way to First Street or does it only go the length of the property?
The front edge of the project.
I have a question. There's sidewalk along the west side of Asti Road that comes, I don't know how far down to or almost to the project. Is there any plan to put acrosswalks or light safety kind of crossings up there? If, you know, it is half of the town, but there isn't continued sidewalk connecting that, I mean, what I've seen so far.
So there isn't currently a crosswalk in, as part of our project plan. I don't know if the city can address any plans for future infrastructure, increasing the walkability to town past our project.
I don't recall if that's a CIP project, but I don't think there's any immediate plans. And there's, there's a lot of areas in town that are in real dire need of pedestrian upgrades. And there is somewhat of a pedestrian infrastructure there. It's not the best, but it's not dissimilar from many places in towns. To answer your question, there's no immediate plans.
So the city doesn't have any immediate plans, anything to address the First Street-Asti junction area either, let alone the sidewalks that would go along Asti to reach to First Street, nor the sidewalks on the north side of First Street that would go under the bridge that are connected to an empty path that leads to the park that actually forces a pedestrian to walk across the train tracks in a dangerous, blind-sided area that needs to have a traffic study.
I'd like to point out that Asti is also 45 miles an hour speed limit that we're expecting children to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I missed the last meeting where we talked about the budget for that, those capital projects. But I don't recall in the notes there was anything about this traffic area, which I unfortunately frequent every weekend, and it's very dangerous.
I think it's something that should be considered. We really don't want to encourage people to jaywalk, but that's exactly what they'll do.
We actually, the city, we forced it to happen. On the north side of the street is where the pedestrian starts and stops at the train tracks. And the only way it picks up is over on the west or the south side of First Street. And so you have to cross dangerously right through the intersection in order for a pedestrian to follow the pedestrian path. And then we're talking about adding the Asti side, which goes, we're going to stop at the property line, and then we're going to have it pick up afterwards on the other side of the street. So you are going to force them to cross the street there too, but it's not a crosswalk as well. But I think the city is now on the hook to fix this problem if the developer is only going to go to the property line. But that was my question. Comment?
But we, I think it's also imperative that we look at the fact that it's going to be family-oriented and we don't have school classes currently in for COVID-19 by school districts. So how are we expecting these children to walk along Asti Road, which is 45 miles an hour, to go down under the, up under, across under the overpass at Citrus Square Boulevard with no stoplights? It's impractical for them to walk down First Street and then walk up and over. I mean, even still, there's a sidewalk there for them to do that, and so.
Well, to keep within the, to ask you a direct question, do we have any security methods or something to address the east side of the property entrance, which I also feel is a security issue?
The east side of the property entrance?
It wraps around the hill right by the river.
Oh, along railroad avenue?
Backside, the east side of the property, which goes right alongside the property of the lumberyard.
You're talking about the private road that goes out to the river? So that is private property owned by the lumberyard. So I can't speak to any of their plans.
But on your property, no, nothing to address like security or anything like that?
No. I don't know how recently you've walked it, but there's some very thick vegetation that's in that riparian area, and we are not removing any of that. So that sort of acts as a natural barrier to the, to the project.
We've had an insane amount of people burning up as natural barriers. So that's a concern. Is there a fence plant on the backside of the project?
No, we don't have a fence. No, we don't have a fence plant for that portion of the site. No, the vegetation there is really thick. I've heard about fires. I will say in terms of the residents of the property, the properties are all managed just like any market rate project would be. So there's a local management company that will manage the property, leasing it, taking care of residents. We're under very, very strict guidelines as a tax credit project to meet maintenance, upkeep, and the proper occupancy of units. And just like any affordable, or sorry, any market rate building, if people are misbehaving, not following rules, they can be evicted. And we also screen all the residents beforehand. So it's, it's not a free-for-all.
Are you going to have an onsite manager all 24 hours?
Yeah, I believe that we have, we have one, we have one unit for management. And then there will be an office there as well for leasing and residents to come and, you know, get help if they need it.
Can I get some clarification on the LEWE products that are being used? Because I noticed that in the written statement, there was an acknowledgement of the necessity for extra fire prevention. Can I get some more, can I get some elaboration on what products are going into that?
I would hand that over to Doug.
So I'll ask you, so to repeat the question so I'm clear on what the intent is.
Okay, well, I noticed that the written statement acknowledged that there was a necessity for extra fire safety and for other fire prevention. So what, but you weren't fully conforming to LEWE. So I was curious what products and what steps you guys are taking for a lot of fire prevention to, to perform like LEWE.
So, so let me address it in two separate aspects. So the buildings will all be NFPA 13 fire-rated, which is the highest, most restrictive fire design for fire sprinklers. Because of the size of the structures, they'll all be provided with a one-hour exterior wall. So you've got your sheer panels, five-eighths-inch den glass, you know, like a JIP board that's like, we've seen it around here, it's like you've got a green color or an orange color on it. And then the cementitious siding or the hardy siding, it's all a cementitious, non-combustible siding material. So the buildings will literally have a one-hour wall with cementitious siding. The soffits are also cementitious, non-combustible. And we've done a project in South Lake Tahoe, for example, where we use, it's a Vulcan soffit grill or vent, if you will, that's in the soffit that in the event of a fire situation, it's got an intimate padding that seals it up. You know, we have to have high-low air through the attics to keep, you know, to meet the energy code. But we've specified, and this would be one of those materials that we would have to prevent fire from getting up into the attic structure. In addition, all of the soffits on the third-floor patios, like the exterior patios, all of those ceilings are also five-eighths-inch Type X JIP board with the cementitious soffit panels applied to them mechanically. So in the event that somebody's having a barbecue, which they don't, they're not supposed to, but every, you know, so there'd be no source of combustion that could actually get up into the attic. So that would be the building portion that we would address. There's a 26-foot-wide drive aisle. All of the buildings have been placed in such a manner that vertical fire apparatus can get to them from basically all three sides, if you will, or all four sides of the structure for fighting fire. And then the last portion would be the sourcing, specification, and installation of any tree materials would be consistent with wildfire material. Like, so we wouldn't source or install trees that would be large for combustion purposes. The intent would be to have small and more ornamental type of trees closer to the structures as well as anything along the perimeter. I don't know if that's the question answered.
One-hour fire rate requirement?
By code. It's required by code, correct?
And so then you're also going to have one-hour fire rate windows and doors?
You mean as far as like the exterior windows?
Correct. You're preserving the envelope, but these are requirements. If, oh, it is a new, it's a techer, say, when a fire blows out, then your fire doesn't see into the surface. And by that you're putting in a fire, so a one-hour wall is kind of obsolete, if you will. There's no fire rate windows and doors.
So, so, and that's, yes, that's a valid thought. Our, our design will be in compliance with the amount of allowable penetrations for windows. It's a calculation that's based upon defensible space, how far we are from a road or from a property line. So the code describes at what point where we would have to put in those types of windows. But historically, for the structures that we do, we would not put in a one-hour rated window in that instance. We call it steel windows. And a window that would meet fire code egress requirements on a structure like this could be four to five times as expensive as just a standard window that is allowed by code. And we've, and we've done them, but it's a significant expense, especially if it's not required by code.
That's what I said, I'm going to endorse your opinion. So if I can see a one-hour fire rate wall, it's always required that the windows and doors also come up at one-hour rating.
I can build structures that we meet the code by, but we'll have a one-hour wall, but we won't have one-hour windows. We can do 20-minute windows. So hopefully that answers the question. I don't know if that's a, if we're getting into the weeds on it.
No, I was just concerned because it's an extremely high fire area. I actually have a map that I've gotten from Cal Fire that showed as of 2021, 1022, 43 fires in the mile-long stretch behind the, the property. So that's just over a fire week that we're getting on.
But it's protected by mitigation.
Yeah, I know, but I think it's still a serious concern, given that the setback from that area to the property is only about 520.
Okay, is that, any other questions that?
I have a landscape question. I'm not sure if you're the usual, who would answer this?
Uh, Tom Phelps is on. He's muted, so if you want to direct the question to.
Yeah, Mr. Phelps, I'm wondering about the screening of building A to Asti Road and 101, and what type of heritage trees we're using to screen that? Or are we using any type of screening? Or is it just this blocked building that's exposed to everyone who drives by our downtown exit?
Good evening, this is Tom Phelps, project landscape architect. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, I'm asking about the screening on Asti Road between that and building A and what type of trees you're using, size of trees. Are they evergreen? Are they, just the screening of that to really, and the thought process of screening off the third floor, which I, when driving by 101, is eye-level with your third floor. So I'm wondering about your screening there.
Most of the trees I'm using on the site are native or, you know, adaptive to the climate, mostly oaks. However, on the, on the street tree, we don't have one defined as of yet, but we certainly can provide for a tree that will help screen the building from Asti Road. The limitation in height oftentimes is determined by the proximity to the building. So I don't want to put a large tree in too close a proximity to the building to get it up to the third floor. But we do have enough space on the frontage, I think, to plant relatively large trees, if that's the commission's desire. You know, we can, we have enough room to do pretty much whatever you'd like us to do for that matter.
And since we're talking about the landscaping, can we also get the root barriers for the trees that you have out there?
The root barriers?
Barriers, uh-huh. On Asti Road, I have a question also on Asti Road, and this might be for city. Are we going to have a parking prohibition on Asti Road? And the reason I'm asking that is that as you exit out, like on Hillford, I know that when you exit out, sometimes you can't see because there's cars parked there. There's either trucks, vans. And so when they park on Asti Road, if you were to get out, it kind of would be hard to see. And so is that something that the city's going to do?
I'd like to call on Stephen, our engineer, if he could address that. I don't know if you heard it, Stephen?
Hello, my name is Steve Vansong, Coastal and Civil Engineering. Good evening, everyone. To answer your question about parking, right now, the project does not include any street parking along Asti Road.
So is it, is it right, are you going to have it, are we going to do red curbing on it where it's prohibited to park there?
Uh, that's a possibility, but the, there will be a bike lane. So if cars were to park, they'd be parking in a marked bike lane. I don't know if the red curb may be redundant, but that's something that we can consider.
I have a parking question as well. There's like a difference between what the code would have required and what the concessions allow of about 82 cars. And let's say there's only half of those cars are actually material because if the residents of this building are probably not confined and planted within walking distance in town, I suspect there'll be multiple cars in many of the apartments. So where are those cars going to park? So, where are those cars going to park?
Is that...
It's not the, it's not the responsibility of the developer, it's, I believe, the responsibility of the city, or somebody can have to deal with that.
I actually have something that might, might be helpful, two things. So going back to your question about Asti, I believe along the Asti 101 corridor, there actually isn't parking allowed by city code, so, we're just not including that as part of our, there just won't be any parking from our development on that. And then, as far as parking goes, this is a very common concern that we get, the state laws around parking for affordable housing have been changing, they've been going down in ratio, so it's sort of a problem everybody's facing, because the practical reality is that most households, if you're just talking about general households, have two to, two cars, you know, affordable or not. We, because if you remember, I said we're going to phase the projects, the, sorry, phase the projects, so that the first phase will have 37 units, but we'll have the entire parking lot done, and that will give us some time to see how it leases up, what people are doing in terms of how many cars they have, so that we do have an opportunity in there to make adjustments if we need to. And then, I also, in addition, talked to the developer, that I actually don't remember the name of it, it's the, the 31-unit farmworker project on the other side of town, I talked to their property manager yesterday. So they have 31 units, they have 66 parking spaces, five of those are guest parking spaces, and she said that about six are empty all the time in addition to that, so they're using about 55 cars for 31 units, which is about 1.75 cars per unit. That just gave me an idea locally, you know, that is a farmworker project, those people are much more likely to need a car, their work is not going to be in town, and they're also migratory, so they end up going to different counties for their work at different times of the year. Those are all important considerations to make, and because we're phasing, we'll have the opportunity to see if something needs adjusting. And just because of the state laws just keep getting less restrictive on parking, we don't have a lot of data yet to know, you know, how do people adjust and what that'll look like, and then if the city has anything to add.
Just generally speaking, from, from my experience, a, a parking standard is, is pretty high. It's three, three pace, three parking spaces per unit. I, most places I've worked, it's considerably higher. So you're starting at a number that's, that's higher, just based on, on that alone. But, your question is valid, Commissioner Waggy, I mean, there, there will be extra cars, and that, that is a concern. The, the state allows these concessions, and, you know, I, maybe there is an opportunity for some parking on Asti, some maybe further down, I, I don't know, I'm just, just throwing it out there.
So what's the density per acre, and then what is the density bonus we're allowing per acre on this project?
We allow 20, and it's, it's 23, right? Yeah, 23.
How many acres is it?
Three and a half.
3.4 acres.
It strikes me that, just looking at the areas, because a lot of vacant states at all costs, maybe some kind of a city parking lot could be leased for them or something like that, it's pretty close. The other would be to walk down to the train station, because nobody uses that parking lot, and, but that's a bit of a hook for most people.
Especially if you have kids and groceries in tow.
Yeah, it's...
And there's just no overflow, and that's what I hear from Hillford Avenue, it's quite the kind of opposite, that there's a lot of cars overflowing on Hillford Avenue, is what I've heard from a lot of the community members.
Oh, downward direction?
Yeah, not so much that there's vacant spaces or anything.
And they can easily walk to the middle school, that's right there, but, yeah, I, I have a concern about transportation to and from the elementary school and the high school as well. I mean, the, the school district doesn't provide much in the way of bus transportation, so those kids are probably not going to walk, I checked it out, the high school's about a mile, and the elementary's a little bit farther.
One quarter.
Yeah, so, they're going to be driven, and that, I think, I mean, it's going to take cars, and it's going to take traffic on Cloverdale Boulevard. I don't, I'm not saying this because I'm against the project, I think these are project problems that need to be worked out, and I think they can be worked out with the developer cooperatively, and the city, I think they'll have to, and maybe the school district, I don't know, but, I think they need to be addressed, and not just the building and this.
I have a question for you about the, well, the design of the removal of the covered parking. Was there a strategy behind that of removal, or is it for cost purposes? What was the reason between?
That was actually, in, in several conversations that we had, the fire marshal, in order to have an aerial apparatus that can reach the third floor for those buildings, the carports tend to get in the way, you know, because you, you have to have a specific angle to be able to get that ladder up there, so that, that was the reason.
Any other questions?
I, I do have some questions. I want to talk about affordable housing. So this affordable housing that we have, we're giving a lot of density bonus concessions because it's affordable. My question is, I'm not too familiar how it works, but when you do the area median income, is that based off of Sonoma, or does Cloverdale has theirs? And, this, the reason I'm asking is that Sonoma County medium, and this is in 2019, was 100 to 3,000, 300, and then when I went on the internet for Cloverdale, it's 71,378.
That is a great question. I don't know how easy it is for you, Lori, to pull up our PDF again, but I actually have a slide towards the end that goes through the area median income, so you just can get a sense, while she's pulling that up. It is by county, that's how the tax credit agency designates it. I believe the current area median income of Sonoma County is about 116,000, so the way that they do it is actually by size of family, because if you say 116,000 for a family of one, it's much different than for a family of four. So 116,000, I believe, is for a family of four. And then, the units are each individually designated by a, an income limit, so somewhere between 30 and 60% of that AMI number. So just for ease of math, while she's pulling that up, if we say a family of four is earning on, in the median of 100,000, if they're earning 30% of that AMI, that means their income annually is 30,000. And then the way that they pay rent is they pay 30% of that income. Does that make sense?
Yes, so, they're just going to pay a percentage, so, everyone that's part of this, it's going to be based on whatever their income is. So there's not a flat rate where all the two-bedroom homes are 1,200. It's going to be based on income.
Yes.
Okay. And, when, this, I know the city requires you to have a reporting form, what's on that reporting form? What's, one of the things, because, for instance, five years from now, how will I know that it is affordable? You know, how would I be able to know that you are charging, that this information is correct?
That's a great question. I don't know about the city, if the city has their own practices for that, but this is, if we use tax credits, that's state and federal funding, and so we're regulated by the state, and I believe we're audited every single year, both on property and also in looking at books and things like that. So it's very, very tightly regulated, and it's deed restricted for 55 years, so, whatever that income limit is for that unit, it stays that way for 55 years. It's a very long-term arrangement.
And that's based on the tenant, right?
Based on what?
On the tenant being there that, that period of time?
The, the, I didn't miss the word, the temp, you said?
Tenant, the...
Oh, tenant.
Yeah, it's based on the person renting the spot, or they get the guaranteed rent.
Yeah, so the, well, the, the unit itself stays rent-restricted in, for 55 years, no matter who's living there, so in order to live there, you have to meet the income unit, uh, sorry, the income limit of that unit. Did that, did that answer your question?
Does LEED certification require you to use, or at least set up the infrastructure for recycled water?
No, that's a dumb question.
Sorry, that was for Commissioner Sanders in his absence.
So, so when you say recycled water, are you talking about gray water, or something equivalent to that, or?
Setting up for purple pipe, or other measures, measures like that.
Uh, so, LEED is like a menu, there's, you know, different specifications that come into play. That is one of the items that we can select in order to meet the minimum LEED platinum requirement. What we've found is, when we do the low-water use fixtures and the zoning and the, it's pretty sophisticated software that goes into running the water. So for example, if it rains last night, the system's not going to kick on in the morning type of, you know, approach, which, nothing's more frustrating than seeing it water if it rained that morning type of thing. We, we don't do those on a lot of projects specifically because of the cost of having a, like a gray water cistern, that then has to be filtered and cleaned, and putting it back into the limited area of landscaping, and it's not necessarily like a cost issue, it's just more of a logistical issue because of how the, the pipe and the plumbing. We can do it where it comes down from the gutter, is retained in a cistern and is pumped. Tom Phelps, we've done projects with him, where we've done that. There are other items that we can select in LEED that give you more bang for the buck, specific to water conservation, in lieu of using gray water or recycled cistern water.
Commissioner Sanders, he's the expert on this, but on the purple piping, on the conditions of approval number 10, page 27, on there it says, "Provide adequate space for the purple piping," but that doesn't mean installing the purple pipe, is that correct? What, what does that mean, "provide adequate space"?
Yeah, that's my understanding, is it's not to install the purple piping, it is to, to leave room for it. I don't know structurally, that actually might be a court question, leaving space for the purple.
It's correct, it's to, use proper chi or... Yeah, you wrap it.
Because on other projects, we're asking them to install the purple piping, even though the city doesn't have the access for it, but we're hoping to have that in all of the projects that we do, so it's not, your project's not the only one that we're asking, or recommending that we, that we install the purple pipe.
And that would be a, a set point in the future to tie into a city system?
Yes.
Yes, so that in the future, we can bring recycled water to your community and actually upgrade your community with a more appropriate way of water savings. And so, it's, it's something that we are trying to, or at least I am, I should not speak on anyone's behalf, but myself, I am trying to motivate every project to bring purple pipe to our city.
Okay. I definitely can't speak to, we haven't discussed that, it isn't a condition right now on the project.
Condition is to leave enough space for a purple pipe in the future, and we've done that on other projects as well. It's a great idea, and it's, it's something that we all are encouraging of, there is a cost to it, so we feel like this condition's more of a compromise, so that it could be accommodated in the future, you know, when we get to a tertiary treated plant, which, you know, it's, I don't know how far out it is, but it's several years.
The other question I have is underground utilities broadband, well, underground utilities, and that's just the condition of approval number 68, it doesn't say broadband, but can we add that, I'm sure that you're going to be adding that?
Sorry, are you referring to the existing utility? There, there's a utility line that's broadband that runs across, it's actually cable, it runs across...
So, right now, you're doing the underground for your project.
Oh, for the project itself.
You're doing, you're doing all the underground. When you're doing the underground, I noticed that you had cable TV, just your under, regular underground stuff, but are you installing like a, like for the internet broadband?
Underground, I actually don't know the answer to that question, do you know?
So, we work with a company called E4, they do, they call it joint trench, and as part of the design, if the tax credit requirements is for broadband, would, we would be providing broadband to meet that requirement within the joint trench design, either from the point of connection at the frontage, and then it would go to each one of the structures where we would have a house panel, if you would, and then all the interconnectivity, if you would. I don't know from, by definition, what you mean by broadband, if it's a, a data speed requirement, if that's something that needs to be read into the condition, so we know what to design to.
Like a fiber, fiber optic line? I, I don't know, if the comp, the, the housing units, they want to have internet, you know, what kind of internet service can they get?
There's fiber optic.
Fiber optic.
Yeah, and so I think by definition, the tax credit allocation requirement is for high-speed internet, and so, we would provide what is available at the time of first construction, so, if there's a line out in the street, or we're making a connection in for our joint trench, then yeah, we would, we would have whatever is available for that broadband application.
We can add that on the condition of approval at the end?
Well, I think the condition 69 is generally, generically speaking about all the utilities that would, yeah, I think 69 is, is the one you're, you're talking about, Commissioner Horvitz. I mean, I think we could add broadband, I think it's generally getting at, and this is, Stephen might know more about this, but, you know, that everything's going to be underground, so we're not going to have any overhead. But I mean, I, I wouldn't see the harm in putting broadband in there, I mean, I don't know that it's available, um, and...
Depends on the provider, and it depends on the provider's needs, and if they'll bring it to the area. I just went through the Nice Fun Battle in downtown Santa Rosa, so, yes.
It says cable TV, which most of us typically get our internet through the cable, but... I don't think we have to add it as a condition.
Okay, just the rest.
Covered.
I have a question about the, the, the seven, the condition of approval, has to do with the, probably in the operator's lift station, I'm wondering if that will have a backup power source and things like that?
There's anything?
Court Mansell, Mansell Sub-工程，yeah, it's required to have a, a backup system and a backup pump, so if you fail either one, you have operation of the other. And it's privately owned and maintained, so the facility developer will be responsible for maintenance of that facility.
Any other questions?
I'm wondering about the bocce ball sport, I think it's another development, it's common to use in, in, in the state of Texas.
You're wondering if people play bocce ball anymore?
I just don't know, I mean, I know it's one long time ago, like it, but I don't want people to play it, so I can, you know, people...
Yes, I know that they've been in other projects. I don't, I didn't ask, I'm sorry, I'm relatively new to the organization, so I don't know all the history of how, how they're used, once we get through the actual development part, but do you know anything about how those? I think a lot, I mean, I, I don't know specifically about the bocce ball, I do know that the tot lots, the gardens, we, in some places, we do above-ground gardens, really depends on the type of, the type of project that it is, so whether it's senior, a large family, if it's an all-studio urban project, it really varies on the population, who uses what, and also by area, so if you live in an area where it's really nice, and you can grab a pet all the time, that's going to happen more, but I don't know specifically about the bocce ball, do you?
I'm curious about, you know, for example, the ability to, to the early order, because I have a little near Park, it's kind of a model, again, across, if it's on a narrow road, and all the way down to the park, or football park, and so maybe that, basically you guys knew about a type of park.
I can't address, so, I can't address the, the question, so, one of the things that we try to encourage is intergenerational community, and so there, you're not just going to have three, four, and five, you know, younger children on the play equipment, but, we have, the state tax credit allocation committee requires two different types of play activities. So in some instances, we may put a pickleball court in, or a half-court of basketball, like if, if we have that, we've done small skate parks on a project down in Orange Cove, we specified one. Bocce ball probably goes into less than 10% of our projects, it would be, the balls are at the community building, and they can check them out, they can go and they can play, but the, what we try to encourage is, older generation... But the, what we try to encourage is, uh, older generation who may be playing the game, you know, you know, working and, and hanging out with younger kids who would be at the, at the tot lot area at the time. I agree, it's a, it's a, a large use and it would be per spec. We've got several different sizes and we've already done the research on the materials and, and whatnot for doing a bocce ball. And we've done them in probably a 15 projects so far. And we haven't had any complaints, I can tell you, from the management company telling us that they're not being used. So we do know that they are being used by residents.
Question? Okay.
I have another question.
One more, okay.
EV charging stations.
What EV charging stations, I always said, I think we have two.
Two of them, okay.
Just required by code, yeah.
Okay, uh, before we, uh, bring it up to public comment, I will probably give us a five-minute break. Everybody, five minutes and we'll be back. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to bring it back to live. Everybody. Everybody lie down, please. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to open up to, uh, public comment, I know I saw some hands raised, so, uh, let's start with them if we could. If they're still have hands raised.
I have a couple. Debbie Howell. Debbie, would you please address the commissioners? Debbie, are you there?
Go ahead, Debbie, you can unmute.
He's muted, how about?
No, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, it didn't come up for a little while. Um, my, my question is for the council, uh, the planning commission or the, or the attorney for the city. So we have our, our housing, um, regional housing authority allocations and right now with the Baumgartner approval and the Cherry Creek approval, we go into the next, um, roundup, um, uh, housing authorizations in the low-income level. So my question is, can the city, um, ask the developer to include more units that are 80 to 120% of the AMI? Um, or is it up to them? I mean, we're going to exceed our 50 to 80% AMI levels in housing, you know, 131 units through 2031. So, that's my question.
Through, through the chair if you'd like me to respond.
Yes, please.
Um, so, the short answer is no, the, the city can't dictate what the affordability requirement would be. The, I, I imagine in this case, you know, the developer is seeking tax credits and those tax credits require certain affordability requirements. And I suspect that, um, moderate income units, so between 80 and 120% AMI, don't qualify for those tax credits, I would, um, imagine, but the developer could speak to that. Um, but the short answer is no, the city can't, um, dictate that those types of units be built unless that's in its, um, inclusionary housing ordinance. Unless the city were to adopt an ordinance requiring that. But it's not something the city, um, could require on a sort of project-by-project basis.
Um, so can I ask the planning commission, is that something that they look at and, and take to the city council? I mean, my, my fear here is that we have all of, you know, more low-income housing in these categories, that low to very low, um, categories, and the burden of cost in healthcare for, we're a healthcare provider and providing services for this population, um, go up dramatically. So that's my concern, that if we don't have any ability to regulate the affordability level that we need in the community, then we, we could end up with a completely low-income community and I don't know that that's in the city's best interest. So what would be the next step to address that? Have the planning commission or the city council address it through an ordinance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the city can adopt, um, ordinances, an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires a certain amount of units to be, um, low-income. They could adopt a, um, certain amount of units to be, uh, in that moderate income threshold instead. Uh, but we're talking about relatively small percentages, you know, the typical ordinance you'd see, you know, a requirement that just 15% of the, the units be, um, moderate income. What, so that, you know, wouldn't be a, the city wouldn't, wouldn't have the ability to mandate, you know, that an entire project, uh, provide that amount of housing, unless the city was providing, you know, some sort of financial assistance and that was a condition of the financial assistance.
Okay, great, thank you, that's very helpful to understand.
Thank you, Debbie.
The next person I have is Colin Week.
Yes, you're on.
Great, uh, planning commissioner Shenan, my name is Helen, and I am the policy director of Generation Housing. Where we have to keep more, more diverse and more affordable housing. I, I'd like to just take a big moment to add some additional, or letter you received of us, and favor the project. Um, you know, we, state our county and the city of Cloverdale are facing, uh, ongoing housing scarcity and affordability crisis that threaten our residents' ability to really meet their basic causes, um, commute or even house gas emissions and causes a workforce shortage that hampers our local business and economy. Really isn't one solution to this crisis. But certainly, um, you know, we believe that then by, of 100% affordable housing, it proves by, it's a, it's a great step in that direction. Um, with more, the community-centric and, and here-generational nature of this project, design with the option in both drought and fire-resistant features, really showcase sustainability and certainly, I think, something everything would be in, uh, the commonest scenario I was really striving for at the time. Uh, and so with that, I would really ask you today to join the course of people in business projects and through the city staff and really let's just bring this project to fruition. Our farm workers need housing and this project will set out to make certain that's reality for many, all Cloverdale home. As always, thank you very much for your service and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Next I have Zee Guzman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you speak up?
Planning commissioners and thank you everybody, David Kelly. I'm Zee Guzman and some of you know me as a very active, you know. Uh, one thing I would like to say is I've heard of a voice for the essential workers, the people that, uh, the community depends on to work in their vineyards, work in their wineries, work in the retail industry, work in hospitality. Um, the people are very much struggling to, to afford and to live in, not only Cloverdale, but in the county. And I think it's really important that we bring affordable housing in. Just, just to give you an example, um, you know, an average, let's just say an average wage is $17 an hour. A worker in a month brings in 2,700 gross. Luckily, if he brings in 2,200, that would be a lot. If you pay rent of 1,800 to 2,000 a month, that doesn't leave much for utilities, groceries and raising a family. You know, we really depend on essential workers to, they're the foundation of the agricultural industry, they're the foundation of the wine industry. And I think it's really important that we, you know, as human beings, take care of the housing needs of those people that are essential to keep our economy going. And, and I think that, um, I, I hope this project is approved and we move forward quickly and everybody's questions get answered, but I, I want to thank you for considering the project and I want you to really think about our essential workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I see no other hands?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, I do have one, Laney Fabian. Are you there Laney?
No, it's Leanne, thank you.
Oh, it's Leanne?
Thank you commissioners, but, um, my first question is define, and this might be a question for Alex. Define affordable housing. And also, I'm very familiar with the stretch of the road that you're, this proposed, already, we already know this is going through this project, because I've been watching this plot of land. We've seen the wells, drilling rigs out there drilling for water. We know PG is out there upgrading the gas lines, so, but, it's, it's not an appropriate place for a project like this, I'm just saying. So, it doesn't conform or fits into the surrounding buildings, what building? There's no building. And you're going to put all this landscaping in, for what? The roads on Osti are too late and the roads are already torn up. No capital funds to improve the roads out there. And you're going to put how many more houses out there and who's going to, who's going to pay for that? It's ridiculous. We, we are watching you and that's all I got to say, goodbye.
Thank you.
Mr. Weeks, did you want to speak again? No, he, he, okay, he put his hand down, there is no more speakers at this time.
Okay, okay, we can open it up to the chamber now. For anybody who would like to make any comments or have any questions for the developers. We have a hand, uh, please walk up to the microphone and state your name and there should be a pad there to write your name down.
Hi, everybody, commissioners, um, I'm Beth McLean, I'm the superintendent of Cloverdale Unified. Um, so I just first want to say I really appreciate the questions you're asking because they are things that are very important to the school district. I want to give a little background, I'd, I'd ask that you extend, um, my time because we are a really important stakeholder in this project. Um, I will keep it brief, I just want to make sure that I speak to some of the important points. Um, we support this project, but I want to be clear on what the conditions are around that support. And we, I have also brought our, um, consultant with us who can go into a little bit more detail as a separate comment. Um, and we also want to invite, uh, the commissioners to attend a special meeting, which I'll, I'll speak to in a moment. So, as I mentioned, I'm, I am the superintendent of Cloverdale Unified, I, this is my second year. Sometimes when we talk about affordable housing, um, people, uh, try to polarize the discussion and make it about, you know, the, um, people, many, you know, don't want poor, uh, uh, brown people in their community. That is absolutely not my goal in coming and speaking to you. In fact, I came to Clover, Cloverdale specifically to serve an underserved student community. Um, we are predominantly low-income, we are predominantly a community of English learners, uh, when, when we look just at numbers. Um, we are an ADA-funded district, which means that we're funded based on attendance, but we are surrounded by districts that are funded on property tax. So we are the have-nots, surrounded by the haves and we struggle to retain our enrollment because districts across the valley offer opera after school. Whereas we are trying to make sure our students have safe routes to school, that our students have meals and that our students have, um, excellent teaching staff and we prioritize, uh, paying our teachers. Um, so I want to make sure that the argument that we're trying to, um, limit who has access to this community isn't part of, uh, the discussion. In fact, we really want to see affordable housing, but we want it to be done in a way that supports healthy schools. So a couple of things that I want to make sure that the city, uh, and the planning commission understand is that we really want to partner. We've been working on building a positive relationship with the city and building an understanding of the impact of development on our schools because my sense is that many of the things that we deal with are not yet clear to the people, um, you know, perhaps to the commission, perhaps the city council. And that's just a project of making, uh, it's an undertaking that will take time and the conditions are changing. Um, in order to have a thriving community, you really have to have thriving schools. And that's part of, um, you know, what sustains and builds, um, a community that if we are a low-income community, also creates avenues for students to move out of generational poverty. Um, and we, I see that as my mission as an educator. Developers should be partners in that, we've really struggled with that in Cloverdale. Uh, developers come to us and request will-serv letters. There's a, currently the Baumgartner Ranch, we can't get a copy of the will-serv letter. We don't know if any agreement was ever made. Um, when this particular development approached us in June and asked for a will-serv letter, which means that we have the capacity to serve the students that will be, um, here in Cloverdale, will be brought into the community based on the scale of the development. At that time it was 81 units, now it's 75. Uh, the formula would, would, and we, we know that this is not necessarily, um, accurate, but one, for low-income, it's one pupil per unit. So we're looking at a minimum of 75 pupils, that's a minimum of three classrooms. Our facilities are aging, um, we are at bond capacity. We use our bond funding very responsibly and, uh, as many of you know, we're in the process of completing a large bond project. Um, we are landlocked campuses and we're, we're inadequate in terms of acreage based on the CDE standards. So we really are in a position where we either have to build a new campus or we have to tear down our aged and outdated portables that are past their useful lifespan and put in new buildings, which are, at this point, a minimum of a million dollars a classroom. So, just to give you an idea of the cost. We're also right now, of course, confronting the universal TK mandate and will need to be, build classrooms for that. And we're pursuing every avenue of funding. So we don't expect developers to come in and solve all of our problems, but I think it's also important to note that Cloverdale Unified provides the majority of, um, open space, play space, facilities, sports facilities for the entire community. And we bear the, the majority of the cost for that. Um, we don't just, you know, offset, although we're going to have to adjust our, our facilities use, uh, fees. Um, we absorb a lot of that, including the maintenance, um, you know, the, we, we have a new field, a new stadium that we're going to have to replace the turf and the track every 10 years and so on. So, we have an enormous burden and we see ourselves as servants to the community, but we expect developers to come in and be partners. So when we were approached and we said, "We can't, we cannot give you a will-serv letter, we're happy to meet with you," this was in June, "to discuss the impact of this development," I got no response. Instead, the developer scheduled a meeting with the community on the same night as a board meeting. So we couldn't attend. And then in September, we were approached again for a meeting. We were finally able to meet in October, we, we provided documentation in advance of that meeting. And in the conclusion of our meeting in October, we said, "We, we are not, we don't want to be a barrier, but we expect some sort of impact mitigation agreement before, um, we can agree that we can manage the impact of your, of your project." And so, I really want to make sure that the commission understands the, the timeline, our efforts to collaborate. Um, I want to make sure that the commission also understands some of the things that, um, that we are most concerned with, including safe routes to school, which you've asked quite a few questions about. We have prioritized, um, uh, providing transportation, if we could hire a bus driver. But as many of you must know, there is a staffing shortage in California and school districts can't hire bus drivers. So even if we could hire, and that's a huge financial commitment, we are unable to hire a bus driver. And whether we could do it now on the basis of, of, um, short, one-time funds for COVID, you know, recovery, we don't know in 10 years if we can fund that, that route. So we don't see any plan for safe routes to school, for meaningful park or open space or soccer fields. Um, I'm concerned about access to healthcare. I'm concerned about access to healthcare, as Debbie mentioned. I'm concerned about access to high-quality fresh food. I think that we have a lot of infrastructure needs in this community that haven't been addressed. So, I think that while we support this development, we really want to urge the planning commission to provide conditional approval and, and make reaching an agreement with the school district to mitigate the impact part of that agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Shanahan, members of the planning commission, city staff and community. I'm Jennifer Gibb with King Consulting. I'm the vice president. Our firm supports the school district, as Superintendent McLean stated. We're here to help in the facilities' planning and funding components. So, definitely been working with the district. They've been incredibly proactive this past year with the leadership of Superintendent McLean in regards to how we can partner with the city and future developers or current developers that are working, working to help grow our community, Cloverdale. Really, I think what's important, as Superintendent McLean stated, we are having the special meeting with the city. We really would appreciate if you could come and attend and educate, be a part of that. We're going to do a deep dive into the data. I know that there's limited time here tonight. I could speak all night about how, how much data we have and really how we want to support this community. But I think at that study session, we can help educate you on the needs that the current facilities, either based on capacity, we're over-capacity in every single school campus that we have. We are properly utilizing the spaces, but having to be creative in some of the utilization of our classrooms. We're also, we're also working to maximize funding. And I think that's really important, because we're not saying, hey, we're not a part of this, and the developers, it needs to be all on the backs of the developer, right? But there's still an impact from the students generated by this development. And we would love to walk you through that, as Superintendent McLean stated. One thing that I think is really important, the district is levying the highest statutory developer fee that they can. It's currently at $4.08 per square foot. So, when a developer comes in, just as, as they come in to the city, they have their permitting fees for you. They have to go to the school district and pay a levied fee of $4.08 per square foot for anything over 500 square feet. What I want the planning commission to understand, and the community to understand, that on a average, for 2,000-square-foot home, for 75 units, which we're just doing really quick and dirty, it's about $600,000 of generated fee. As Superintendent McLean stated, if we have 75 students generated from this development, because it's one student per unit of affordable housing, that cost to house those students can range with total project costs, hard and soft, so architecture, the construction, all of that. It can range anywhere from $4 million to $5 million to build three classrooms. And that'd be great if those students only came in kindergarten, right? And we only had to be, build three more classrooms there. But they're going to come in all ages and, and at all levels. And so, we need to be able to support them. $600,000 of 5 million is roughly 12% to 15% of the fees that will be generated based on a statutory level-one fee to actual impact of this development on Clover, on our school district. So, that is really a lot. But we want to deep dive a little bit more at our special meeting, and really would like you to attend again. One other thing that I wanted to mention, that Superintendent McLean did state, we are in support of this project. We absolutely think this is a great project for the community, for the growth of Cloverdale. Contingent upon a few things, like Superintendent McLean said. One, mitigating the impact upon the school district. Very important that we can support the kids of our community, properly housed in safe, warm and dry spaces. And appropriate program, adequate spaces for program. Universal Transitional Kindergarten is a program. It's an unfunded mandate at the state level on AB 130 that was passed in July. And we will now, in the next four years, have to house all four-year-olds. A whole nother grade level is coming to all school districts throughout the state of California. That's a lot of students, and there, it's unfunded. The state didn't give us any money to do that in facilities. So, again, there's this common thread of much more need than available funds. And we want to be partners with the city, planning commission, developers, as we continue to move forward on this project. Another item that is of concern to the district is the CEQA exemption under Class 32. There is going to be, I think there was several mentions by Mr. Thompson, Mr. Rattie, in regards to traffic impacts. I would urge the planning commission to see if some initial studies could be done. It doesn't mean that a full mitigated negative declaration has to be done, or that study has to be in a full EIR. But could we do some traffic studies to really understand the impact? Because safe routes to schools are incredibly important to our, to our students' safety and, and I believe to this community. So, in all of that, thank you again so much for the opportunity. And we look forward to potentially seeing you on the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other comments? Please come down to the microphone. State your name and write, write down the pad.
Hello, thank you. My name is Kevin Kostoff. I'm with my wife Sheila Kostoff. We reside at 605 Lake Street East. So, we are in the middle of that hill that will overlook the development. Basically, for the most part, I'm not against the development. What I'm against is the timing of the development. So much of this was pushed, because this is a TOD district, so it has to be dealing with transportation. I heard already a couple of times that many of the residents of this housing development will have their own cars, because they won't be finding jobs here in Cloverdale. They're going to have to go elsewhere for employment. So, they will not have that transportation, so they will need to have cars. And being in a TOD district, the whole basis was transportation. They're going to be next to the train station. They're going to have quality transportation. The closest thing I can get from the state website about a train in Cloverdale is 2027. It's still six years out, at the minimum, 2027. Yet, we are going to put a building in here that's going to have up to 160 to 200 residents, plus kids and all the other stuff, with no real reasonable transportation guidelines for them. So, it's not as much that I'm against affordable housing. What I'm against is really the timing of it. I think right now, we are not set up on the east side of the road to allow to have high-density housing like that. If you look at our hill, and I invite you all to my backyard for a barbecue, there are only 11 homes on that hill. They're all relatively 40, 50, 60 years or older. They're all three to four bedrooms. And they're all basically between a quarter of an acre to two-acre lots. And now, we're about to oversee three acres filled with 75 units, 200 people. The thing that scared me the most was someone mentioning about the community room, which I think is a great idea, community rooms, you need them. But for a quincinera, 150 kids and people showing up, where are all these people going to park? I looked at the plans, and I saw that there are two parking spaces for 15-minute time allotments. You take the people that are living there, and then you take their family and friends. They're obviously going to park on Asti Road. We have walked Asti Road for the last 22 years. I would never let my son go down to school without being driven. That was just, you just knew that. He wasn't allowed to cross that road. If we were to go to River Park, which is right next to us, we still have to go on Asti Road, cross First Street, just to get to a viable, what you call a sidewalk. Now, I think this is going to end up creating a lot of issues for the city. Because I don't think, looking at the roadway, the speedway, whether or not you're going to have enough room to do the trees on the sidewalk, the bike lane, and have parking, and still have a viable transportation corridor. So, I think just right now, putting this kind of development on that side of town is a little too soon for the TOD requirements. So, I think you just need to look at other locations. And this has nothing to do with not my backyard situation. Let's be clear about that. The housing is needed, granted. But what we're trying to supply and what we have, there's just too many dangers out there. Asti Road's not ready for it. The whole Lake Street area not ready for it. Even, I think, trying to create a viable parking lot on Railroad Avenue, you have not seen the traffic of trucks coming in there. So, I really think that all the planning commissions need to come up for a margarita and really look at what this hill looks like right now. Because if you take the hill in general, yes, we're being bombarded by PG&E right now for the new gas lines. But there is still no commitment to whether that road is going to be paved. Right down the road, they're going to have underground utilities. They're going to have great roads and everything. But it ends at their property line. The rest of it is still rural Cloverdale. So, all I can say at this point is, thank you for listening. And like I said, it's just not the right time. Let's find another spot. Thank you.
My name's Richard St. Angelo. I live at 218 Live Oak Drive, about 200 to 300 feet due east of the proposed project. Up hill from it. I think that we've addressed some of the, some of the questions regarding the primacy of the TOD zoning designation and the density and all that stuff. I can't go with that now, because I, I don't think we have any, any, anything to say about that. Other than the fact that I believe that it's, it's inappropriate zoning for that particular parcel. I don't know how it got put in there. But when you consider the implications of what it allows, next to a low-density residential area, that's a very poor transition of high density to low density. There should be medium density in between, and there's no, no provision for that. Let's go beyond that. If the project were to be evaluated for its impact in the neighborhood, Asti Road, quality of life, water, energy use and more, then I have some specific observations offered in hope of improving the proposal. First off, the net-zero energy use goal is good. But I'm very skeptical that there is enough roof area, considering the fire department's required setbacks, for photovoltaic panels, to provide enough photovoltaic panel, panels to result in net, net energy for the, for the proposal. In fact, I challenge the architect on that, or his consultant on that. I believe the solution, if there is, if there be one, would be to install some covered parking that would be covered in photovoltaic panels, or to provide some PV panels ground mounted in some of the open space. That's, that's my question about that. And I'd like to have that verification of net energy use included as one of the conditions for approval in the, in the, in the, in this document that you have in front of you. No. In terms of parking, people have addressed that before. 99 proposed parking spaces for the amount of people proposed to live there is inadequate for them to park all their cars. The spillover will occur on Asti Road. Asti Road, as it now is, has two travel lanes and two bike lanes, and that's it. There is no room to park legally. Now, where's the spillover going to occur? I don't know where. It has to be way far away from here. It could, it could conceivably occur down at the train station, but that would defeat the purpose of using this train station for mass transit and people parking there. And as well, even if you assume that parking, parking would be somewhat adequate, there are only two, two visitor spaces. For how many units? For 75 units? That's, that's not, not, doesn't make, make any sense. Now, with the 75 units and 137 bedrooms, noise and traffic are bound to greatly increase. And I believe that the planner's statement that the project would not result in a significant effect is wrong. I think you've been badly served by that statement. The general appearance of a relatively massive three-story apartment building on the Asti Fronted Road is a radical departure from the neighboring residences. We've already addressed that. I think if you, if, if the developer were to reduce the number of units, you could allow for a reduced building heights and a much more harmonious visual impact. I think that's not going to happen, because I think the developer is doing the traditional development procedure of maximizing the density, because they want to maximize the profit. If they were to reduce, reduce the density, they would probably be able to make a profit, but it wouldn't be as much. But it would be much more accommodating for both the neighborhood and for Cloverdale, and also for potential impacts, both on schools and on Asti Road. Small, a small point. It said there's going to be one water meter. If there are not individual water meters for each residence, then that won't, that will discourage individual, individual water conservation. There'll be no accountability. And going into the present climate of global warming and the, and the, and the present drought right now, that would be not good, be bad. Now, unless I'm wrong, and I, I, I would like to stand corrected on this if I'm wrong. On the south, there are about 50 parking spaces, 47. And on the north, there are three. Now, of those 50, they're all clearly visible from Asti Road, unless there's some sort of screening. You mentioned there's some existing riparian trees right there. Will that screen the parking, parking spaces on the south? I don't know. I'd like to have that, that addressed. Also, the way that parking is laid out, there are many, many compact parking spaces next to each other. And that's not a good planning procedure, I believe. I believe that when you have a lot of contiguous compact spaces, you're inviting scrapes and inconveniences that can be largely remedied by dispersing the compact spaces throughout the, throughout the project, rather than having all be on the south, as they are now. Last question about the water thing is under the city's water shortage stages, the landscaping itself could be deferred a long time until stage six is, is reached. That's my interpretation of the city standards. And how long is that going to take with the, with the present warm climate we have right now? Now, specifically, backup power only for the small community building is inadequate for all occupants and their appliances, particularly their refrigerators and computers. We've all had this happen to us before. We've gone for two or three days having to buy bags of ice if we didn't have a generator. Are you going to have 75 people with rotting stuff in their refrigerators? No computer access for the education and for the work? I don't think, I think that's a very good, I think, I don't think that's, that's very accommodating at all for the residences. And a simple, large generator could provide backup power or generators. That's not included in this proposal. Now, they propose a 240-square-foot community garden. For how many residences? 200? 150? 130? Is that going to be enough? That's 12 by 20 for all those people, for a community garden in an agrarian district. That's woefully inadequate. The same applies to the dog park. Tiny little dog park for that many residents, residents? That's not enough either. So, my opinion. I think also that there's a big, a big, a big, big thing, a large item that's a pity in the mind. There's no provision for washers and dryers in individual apartments. How many of you would choose to live in a house or an apartment without a washer-dryer hookup? Please raise your hands. Yeah, we're all, no.
One out of 50 in this turn. There you go.
So, I think that when you don't provide that, and that, that can be provided in a closet or alcove, maybe 24 square feet or less. That's, that's really easy. And that's 24 square, you can actually make it a little less than 24 square feet. We'll use 24 square feet as a benchmark. Now, that's less than 5% of the smallest apartment and less than 2% of the largest apartment. I think the specific design is deficient in not including that, because that will allow all these working families with so many children much better quality of life. It'll also save them money from having, having to patronize the laundromat, which is a profit center for the manager, or for the management. As well, the, since the laundromat is located across from the apartments, it always requires a walk from the exterior, or from the third floor as well, all the way to the laundromat, do your laundry, and then go back. That's really inconvenient. And that's a tremendous deterrent to the quality of life of the residences and the, and the of the residences and deterrent to the permanency of the residences themselves. Because as soon as they get the opportunity to move to a place that has more amenities, they will, and will have a high turnover, and will have a very... a less cohesive community. These are things that could be addressed by the design of the project. It might result in lower density, it might result in a lower profit, but it would still be viable. And I urge the planning commission and the architect to do as much as they can to look out for the quality of life for the residents. That, to me, is also one of the primary goals of the city, and the city government and the city officials, is to guard, is to look out for the quality of life for the residences. I don't think it's going to be addressed very well with this project. I'm in favor of the project. I wish it could be downsized so that it'd be a lot more convivial, a lot more commodious, maybe even have some delight in it, too. Thank you very much.
Chair, if you'd like, I could start the three-minute...
Yeah, we're going to have to do that. Keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Allen, and I live on Lake Street, and I have for the last 21 years. I understand the need and the mandate for affordable housing. This project in its current state is not developed in a way that I feel is caring and supportive to the community and my neighborhood. I strongly oppose the current development proposal site for a multitude of reasons. The main reason is my concerns align with health and safety, concerns about the citizens and the environment. I wonder what the potential impact will be with this influx of people on our police department. I call the police probably two to three times a week because of all the different things that happen on that side of town, and they cannot always respond. So, you're going to add 200 more people and think that they're going to be able to respond to that? I wonder. At our last meeting, I heard concerns about the school board, and I was wondering what was addressed by that, as far as their concerns of being able to adequately provide for the influx of the education system and the capacity. That was a huge concern. I'm really concerned about traffic, lack of sidewalks, streetlights, road maintenance, and safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. The sidewalk only extends a little bit on Lake Street, on one side, on the east side or the west side. There's no sidewalk, there's no safe access for children, there's no crosswalks. It's very unsafe. I mean, I live there, and I have to run across the street if I want to cross the street. I'm really worried about that. And, you know, have any of you ever been there? Have you gone to Lake Street and Asti Road during different times of the day and seen what the traffic's like? I mean, if you want, I can send you all videos from my backyard. It's crazy, and it's not safe. I'm concerned about the noise pollution, and my concerns about that are real because at my house, I can tell my family, "Oh, it's time for dinner," and Kevin and Sheila can hear me. They can hear me clear as a bell. So, if they can hear that, what kind of noise pollution's going to come into our neighborhood from 200-plus people living there? I have a strong concern about that. There is vegetation, but you can walk right through it. The homeless have cut paths through all that stuff with chainsaws. I mean, take a walk down there, go check it out for yourselves. I just wonder if the city has the manpower to maintain all of these different things and create this infrastructure that's needed for safety. Why is there no environmental impact report? You know, I live there, we all live there. We saw the land get scraped, we saw soil be dumped, we saw lots of different things happen before we even knew about this project. So, I'm just curious about that. And I just wanted to say in closing, like, when the council considers this, approving a plan for development, it should be reflective of the neighborhood that it's situated in. Planning and development can be done in a way that's inclusive and respectful and appropriate and safe for the entire neighborhood and the community, and I don't really feel like this fits. There are certain elements that just don't match up for me. I'd like to invite the city council members and the planning commission to come do some reflective work. Does this project and its current proposal reflect the most support to the residents, the neighborhoods, the community, the school, the police, the fire, and the other city departments? Is this proposal the best fit within the context of our town? Or does approving this plan just count as a win for voting for affordable housing? I'm just very concerned about the safety, and I would like to, like Kevin said, you can come to Kevin's house, you can come to my house, come and see what it's really like. Don't just look at the pretty plan and the nice picture because it's very different. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please, three minutes.
I live near this area. The safety is, as city council can assure you, my biggest concern is that's homeless highway, and they are... There's a lot of registered sex offenders that are homeless, and you can't track them, but they're running up and down Asti, so, you know, that's a big concern when there's going to be a lot of kids there. The developer mentioned the first part of the funding is going to be from ag money. So, is there any other source of funding? Are they even looking into it? Last time, we had a developer straight-up lie to our city council and said the same thing, and then the whole entire housing unit ended up being ag housing instead of for everybody, and duped our city council and lied about it. So, I hope that you guys are paying attention that there might be other sources of funding besides ag money. We've already touched on the parking spaces, but, you know, what about traffic lights, a roundabout? Who's going to pay for that? From Citrus Fair to Asti, and then down Lake Street, or, excuse me, down First Street is going to also require... There's no sidewalks, there's no safety over there, there's nothing. Kids are going to get hit, not to mention all the big rigs that come in and out of the lumberyard. The speeding, I've even called the police department, they put a speed trap right in front of my house because people drive down there like it's Highway 101, full speed, even faster. Public transportation, that's a joke. I don't know where all of you have been, but Smart Train, I think, was supposed to be here in, what, 1993? Where are we at, 2021? I think all our money is being allocated to other cities right now, so I really wouldn't bank on Smart Train. All of us in this room will probably be dead before Smart Train even gets up here. Buses, they don't run consistent. Buses do not run consistent to Cloverdale, let alone to that area. Somebody here mentioned that they're going to have parties, quinceañeras, and all that stuff first. Where are they going to park? Are you guys going to provide shuttles? The owner, are you going to provide shuttles? That'll be nice. I have a letter from the city regarding the lumberyards with their noise ordinance. They got to shut down. So, how is it that there's going to be parties and stuff allowed there at this complex when the lumberyards have a noise ordinance and when they have to shut down? And I'll provide that letter because that's going to be a big factor here when these people are saying they're going to have all these parties and stuff. I don't think so. Because if you're going to regulate the lumberyard, you're going to regulate this. The schools, they're severely impacted. We barely have teachers for the kids we have now. So, I don't know where you think these teachers are just... We can't even get teachers. We have positions open. I don't know where they're going to come, how, when, I don't know. But I don't know where you think all these kids are going to go to school. How many dogs per unit is going to be in there? It's going to sound like a frickin' pound barking all day. That's ridiculous. How many dogs per unit? I know apartments that allow zero pets, maybe a stupid cat, but how many dogs are you going to allow in there? That's ridiculous. A dog park? Open it to the public. Cloverdale's been trying for, what, 25, 30 years to get a dog park? Open it to the public. Get rid of the bocce court. Nobody's going to play bocce. That's a joke. We had a bocce court. Where, at City Park? It was shut down. Nobody's going to play bocce court. Extend it, make it a dog park for everybody in Cloverdale. Your kids' playground? That's too small. You got... How many kids going to be living there? They're going to all be crammed, what, on this little platform right here? You're crazy. Those kids are going to have nowhere to play, nowhere. And the comment that our community solely depends on vineyards and wineries? No, we don't. The other comment about the ag workers, the poor ag workers can't afford housing? Okay, well, what about retail workers, laborers, janitors, teachers? Everyone's struggling. Anybody think about that? Or does it solely have to be just ag workers? To me, that's real discriminatory. My daughter's a cashier. She can't even find an apartment she can afford, a studio, barely even a room to rent. So, what? If this housing was for all one color of people, one category of employment? That's real discriminatory. That's pathetic to me.
Thirty seconds.
I don't care. All of our community is struggling. Everybody across the board is struggling for housing. So, you guys need to really consider that. And then whatever happened to, you know, your attorney gave a good job here, you know, smoke singling everybody, "Oh, yeah, no, here, you guys got nothing to say, it's going to pass," whatever, you know? That's what his whole presentation interpreted as. But, you know, you guys need to think about the area this is going. This is a rural area. You're just going to stick this ginormous, huge apartment complex in the middle of, like, the country? Why don't you make it look similar? Why don't you think about that? These people, not me, these people got to look out their window and see straight into an apartment complex? That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. And I'm not against the housing at all. I'm against this being rushed and poorly planned. And the school board didn't even get a chance. I thought that was real shady to have that meeting planned the same day as the school board meetings. That's not fair. That's shady. This is an important meeting. Three minutes doesn't work.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Dino House. I live on Lake Street. I've lived in this town for 20 years. The developers, they want to make a lot of money off of a nice government project, but they don't live here. They don't have to deal with the consequences of their project. We do. I don't see how you... I mean, I'm not against the project necessarily, but I don't know how we can move forward until the infrastructure issues have been addressed. I didn't even know about the school project. That was completely new to me, and nobody has a solution for that. But we want to vote and go forward with the project. As for the parking, I also didn't know, I really didn't know much about the project before today. I didn't realize the parking ratio of cars per unit. It's completely ridiculous. We all know this, even if you're for or against the project. We know the parking ratio is completely absurd. Nobody has proposed a solution to that problem. The developers are like, "Hmm, not our problem," and they don't care. But where are these people going to park their cars? That needs to be addressed before you push forward with a project. It just, it needs to be addressed. The sidewalks, the street, that is a major thoroughfare. That is the main access to the east side of the river. It's not just the cars in that area, but the cars going through, across Crocker, and out to the east side of the river when the Summer Bridge isn't in. That's the main traffic affair. And as for safety, I'm sure you are aware, at least, I think at least once a year, somebody fails to stop at that stop sign going down Asti at the Crocker intersection, and there is a major multiple-vehicle pileup crash with, you know, I think we've had fatalities there. It's a regular thing. I walk down, and I look at the cars stacked up because they just don't stop at that sign. Forty miles an hour, straight across the highway into another car. I count, I don't know. I think I've seen it at least 10 times since I've been here. It's a pretty regular occurrence. I also think the density is too high. I think, I'm not even sure what the ratio is, but something along the lines of 100 and some odd units in three acres? It's too many houses in too little space. I think a smaller project with a little less density still can have the low income. Makes more sense, but that probably is going to cut down on the profits and the tax incentives and the government incentives that they're looking for. That's all they care about. They don't live here. It's not their town. It's not their problem. It's ours. That's all.
Thank you.
See no additional? We will bring it back to the end so we can continue with the design review.
Yes, Chair, I did put together the aspects of the design review that we could go through. It's pretty lengthy. I don't know... I could... Maybe it would be better if we brought up the applicant's PowerPoint again, Lori, if you could do that, and then I can just... That way, we can refer to the plans, and I can just discuss what the topics are that are straight from our design review matrix in our design review. So, I'll just... I can just read these off to you, and maybe we can just eliminate some, or if you want to talk about all of them, there's, like I said, there's a lot of them. There's the site planning, layout, building orientation, parking area, lighting, landscaping, common areas and open space, fencing, I don't know if there is any fencing per se, building design, building massing and articulation, window placement, roof lines, materials, colors, and architectural details, building lighting, and mechanical equipment. So, that's a lot. But maybe, Lori, if you could bring up the applicant's PowerPoint again, because I think it has more detail, and maybe we are... Yeah, Doug, if you can come up and help us with some of the... If you wish. It's there for a split second.
What page would you like me to go to?
I'm sorry, I wanted the other one, the applicant's one, which was the PDF, because it has more detailed drawings that we could look at while we go through this list.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I couldn't hear you.
Can you bring up the applicant's PowerPoint? It was the PDF one that has all the drawings.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one up.
Excuse me, are we saying the planning commission doesn't have a copy of their own review of this thing?
We do.
We do.
We all should have it in front of you. We've all gone over it by now, yes.
Yeah, but we still have to do it in a public meeting. With you to see it. Yeah. We're all, we're good.
So, Chair, if you want to start with maybe the site layout...
Yeah, we hit the top buttons, the site layout, the design profiles.
Doug, do you have a recommendation on which slide would be the best for reviewing the site layout? Lori, can you go the other way, maybe to the top?
That it? That it?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori. So you, you've got, I don't know, do you want, Chair, how do you wanna, you wanna?
Just see if we got any discussion up here on the site layout? Are we good with how they have the buildings placed? Parking lot? Playground?
Good with it, are we? Any questions?
Questions, things you'd like to change, things you'd like to address?
I'm concerned about Building A being right on Asti Road. I'm concerned that there's no screening between Asti Road. I'm concerned that it's a three-story, straight-up building on a major road that doesn't have any tiered status that could help reduce the size and impact that's on the freeway. I'm concerned that there is no layout of a children's area that really allows a family area. In fact, from the plans itself, reading it, I would have thought this was an adult-only complex. But then I see a little, what do they call it, a totlot? But there's nothing for a kid to go other than to the freeway to play. Maybe go around the backside, which puts them in that other risky area of the woodlands to the river slash homeless encampment that's right around the hill there. Those are some of my concerns, let alone the parking concern. I'm also concerned that we don't have sufficient fencing to protect the neighbors to the north that anyone, you know, because there's no place to play on the property. So they're gonna wanna go up that hill, of course, and play on the grass. Or go over to the lumberyard and play in the lumberyard. So that's gonna be fun to stay safe at. Or at least play on the abandoned railroad tracks would be also a safe place to play. So those are my concerns with the property layout. I also, I, I know, and I am, and people, I've worked with the Community Development Commission. I'm very proponent of affordable housing. I just think, and I really believe in quality of life. I appreciate the neighbor who mentioned that because it's a summit that I went to in, in the city in San Francisco. And they talked about, really for low-income housing, you wanna have a really good quality of life. And we've made concessions to remove the private common area amounts down to 50, 60 square foot patio, which is, in my hotel developments, that's a small patio for a hotel, not a residential. So I think you're, you're almost one building too big. It's my, my fault, or my thought is that, you know, you're going from 75 units down to 50. It might be more appropriate for this odd-shaped, small land. And then my last major concern of the property placement is safety. And I think that the city has a large liability. We need to think about taking care of the safety at first in Asti, along Asti, no parking along Asti. And I think the city is gonna have a large safety obligation before this project can report.
Back to the fight, round it out, whatever. Figure it out.
Angela. Anybody else up here with any comments on the layout?
Well, I kinda echo Commissioner Acey's comments there. Again, I really wanna hammer home the fire danger because even though it's a moderate fire zone, we have had 83 fires behind there in two years' time. And we've been very fortunate that they've all been mitigated without a major incident. But I think that knowing that and that they have made it very clear that they have taken extra steps for higher precaution and are very mindful that they need to implement certain things to reinforce their structure from fire, that it is a liability for us where it is located because we know that these fires exist back there and until the homeless population has been dealt with and that source of fires can, is mitigated, that's, it's gonna be an existing threat to this lot.
Not to pile on, but I wondered at the exemption from CECL that was cited, that the member was serving U2. I don't view this as, I mean, one of the rationales is the city infill or urban infill. But that doesn't strike me as an infill project on the most rural part of town. And after also considering the whole issue of traffic safe route to schools, I think there's an awful lot of potential impact that this project could have that really deserves some serious study. And also, as Commissioner Acey said, I think that the city has some serious issues or liabilities with safety and the whole infrastructure setup on that side of town.
Thank you. Would you go over to anything on the layout?
I did have concerns for the layout as well. In terms of my calculations, I know that like for the one-bedroom, they had an office room. It's one plus one, two bedrooms, another person, three bedrooms, one. But then I started doing my calculations and like a one-bedroom apartment, at the minimum, I would say like two people would be there, two individuals, that's 64. For two bedrooms, a unit of 24, let's just say we put four individuals in there, that's 96. In a three-bedroom, if we add six individuals, that's 114. So I'm looking at 274 individuals. And that's like the maximum, you know, I'm looking at those numbers. But it is possible. And some units here at that, the farmworkers unit, they have more individuals than that. And so I, I'm just concerned with the layout. And exactly what Commissioner Acey was mentioning. There's, I'm struggling with the layout. And I'm also concerned that, and this would be for the attorney, for the Housing Accountability Act, we cannot have more than five hearings. So that means that they've already had one with the community and today would be the second one. So that leaves them with three more hearings. Now, if it passes those five hearings, they automatically discounter. Is that correct?
There, yes, there are limits on the number of hearings the project can have if the project meets all of the city's objective standards. Like this project does, there is a limit of five hearings on the, on the matter. The city's not close to that yet, but it could be an issue if there are, continue to be a number of hearings in the future.
Thank you.
I have a couple other concerns. Yeah. One is resiliency and storage slash potentials to survive power outages in the community center. It's something I'm always gonna bring up in any project development in our city. And the other is, we are thinking ahead, like the train is gonna be around the corner. And that's why we're reducing parking and trying to live off of the bicycle storage and that. But I do think that if you're going to have this progressive movement in your development, which I completely appreciate, thank you for thinking this way, I think you need to have the infrastructure for EV charging everywhere because by the time this development gets off the ground, we are well in our way in our requirement as a state to remove gas vehicles. And so I think there're gonna be a lot more EV vehicles and having two spots is extremely minimal for this project. And I also don't believe we're ready for the train. I think living with that is a little difficult to believe that that's in the next five to 10 years.
I took a look at the Smart's, what do they call their short-range plan? And it runs through 2029. There's, all it says is like it lists the track going from Windsor to Hillsburg and then Hillsburg on up here as unfunded expansion. So they're not looking at anything, it doesn't appear that they're looking at anything through at least 2029. For, and then if they got somewhere to eat somehow, how long is it gonna take? Four or five years to build, you know, to build up that traffic? So I think the train station is unfortunately just not a viable entity in the foreseeable future.
I think I have one more item. I don't see any sound barrier for the residents at Lake Street. I don't, you know, we're putting a high-density product into an extremely rural area and, you know, expecting our existing community members to just tolerate this massive amount of noise pollution. And I think that there needs to be something else along that side that helps our existing community members.
So, taking notes here?
We are, we're taking notes.
We can recap, Rafa. We have it all written down as well.
Tempting, a sound barrier. Forty V.
Resiliency in the common area space.
Yeah, we, there is a condition about the resiliency based on the common.
I did catch that one, okay. Perfect. Glad you got that one. Screening and fencing around the entirety of the property, especially on the Asti roadside to the north, between that and the neighborhoods, even though I think it's a great view for the people who live there to see that green hill. I think it's gonna be torture for the kids not to be able to play on it. I do appreciate that they're painting the building to try to lessen the heat because this is gonna be an asphalt jungle there. But there's no place for the kids. So I think there needs to be screening on the backside, so that needs to be on there. So I had, I, I, the traffic study has to be involved somehow. I don't know how we can get the developer involved in this and not have the city pay this. But that Asti Road, First Street, not even to talk about just this project, but if we do bring the train up here, don't think the train's not gonna try to go down to First Street to turn around. And so you're gonna have to deal with the traffic study there anyway with bringing the train to our town. So extremely dangerous intersection that we need to make sure that we're well aware of before this project begins. And going backwards, back to the Train Depot, I think we need to worry about traffic back to there, at least on a pedestrian level, bike level, and making sure it's taken care of all the way back in the city. And then the other part I'm really concerned about is, is the purple pipe. I know that they're meeting their lead goal requirements and they've asked for that, but we as a city would love to have the ability to expand that opportunity down the road. And so we would love to have our projects have purple pipe included in all of them to help protect us for the future. I still think Building A is oversized. I, I'm so supportive of affordable housing that we need it. And I think it's really smart that they're doing the lead housing and serving energy and water. But 36 units right on the road facing the entire community of this county going north on 101 is gonna see this project. It's great that they get to see a winery at the south end, a wine storage center. And then they see this one. And I wasn't happy about the wine storage center not having screening. And I'm not happy about this one not having screening either.
So how about a detail, more of a detail on the front end landscaping?
I would love to see the types of trees that are gonna use this. I want an annual evergreen tree to protect this from growing, from, be able to visible, not just for people driving up the 101 and seeing this building type, which is really boxed. But having developed properties like this in the past in other states, I, I know that you wanna protect the tenants from seeing the road right in their windows. I mean, that freeway is gonna be looking right into their units. It's not gonna be helpful when you're on the third floor and you have glass windows. You're gonna hear that freeway louder than anyone else has heard it.
You hear them now.
I know, but you're gonna, yeah. It'll really change things.
Well, that's why the new modern style is really developing at its tiered.
So the third floor is actually set back off and you can use it as a terrace. So it actually, it looks like a smaller building. And it's great for like downtown and urban areas to have the setback, but it reduces sound going into the units. But there's, there's more modernized ways than this is an older style.
That's it on the site layout? Okay.
That, that probably covers landscaping too, unless there's other comments on landscaping? Uh, probably we may have just covered fencing? Or is there more comments on fencing?
Fencing.
Common open space? I heard a couple comments about that. I'm not sure the options are providing a number of amenities, but I don't know if there's any direct comments regarding the, the common open space?
I just, I think it's unfortunate that they're taking the exemption of lowering the private and the common spaces because of density rights, but at the same time, they're lowering the quality of life of people who need to have that most. So it's kinda counterproductive to what the mission of the Affordable Housing Project is.
I completely agree that, you know, we're really maximizing profits on and that's our lowest-income people by squeezing as many possible people in there as small as space as we can.
Okay, so what about the building design? Maybe we, Lori, could you maybe scroll down? If you can find an elevation or?
What would you like, Kevin?
Uh, could you, could you scroll down a couple slides? And let's look for an, like a picture of the building or elevation?
On this PowerPoint?
Uh, yeah, what, what do you guys think is, which would be the best? Is that a good example?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That's a good one right there, Lori. You can, you can leave it there. So that's the view along Asti, yeah. Can you go back, Lori? There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
Just the angle of the block of the building is frustrating to me. I think your project in Hillsburg is so well-placed that you can't see it from the freeway and it's screened from vegetation. So that Hillsburg development was a good strategic way of placing the buildings. But this one, it's like the worst way you can place the building. It's like you're showcasing the 101. Hey, look at this, a big apartment place. And in a rural community that we have really very few apartment places, especially trying to put those on the freeway.
Architecturally wise, are we, we have any comments with the windows, the patios, what you already mentioned? Little on the small side?
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, the roof tiers? The sheds?
I just would be curious to know, when the solar design is actually in place, how much of those roofs are really covered with solar? Like the entire roof? The schematic shows these little blocks, but I doubt if that's really.
Oh, no, for that size of units, it's gonna take a carry to the roofs to wipe those down or to be close to them. I mean, it's gonna take anywhere from a normal two-bedroom unit, you're looking at, you know, five to 10 panels minimum for a low-usage unit. So 10 panels times 36 in a unit, and it's, you know, you could be looking at, there's, there's so many panels we're gonna need on that, just a bunch of panels. Now hopefully they have all electrical-efficient equipment put in. I'm worried about the neighbors with that. They want them on the hill and they have the reflection.
One, one thing to consider, and I understand the reaction to the holdup to the, the Asti Road the way it is, but it does bring a lot of the units further away from the existing neighborhood. From the existing neighborhood that's kind of up on the hill there.
Well, I know, it's, it's like catch 22. I mean, I totally agree with their thought process of putting that there to block kids off from going to Asti Road. But really, there's no place for the kids to play in the entirety of the project other than the freeway. So they're just gonna leave across that road. There's no place to go other than trespassing onto the neighbors. You're gonna go over to the, to the lumberyard? Or you're gonna go over to the freeway? Or go to the river? I mean, as a boy growing up, I would have loved to played on those train tracks and in the lumber station. I would have loved that and cruised around the river. I would have loved that and cruised around the river, but, uh, it's a really, this is a really dangerous project for families.
Let's have, let's have one head of time up here, please.
So, we have, um...
So, let's try to give them some direction for this building. I think one thing we want to do for sure is get more of a detail on the landscaping, um, along the frontage. Um, I, I don't know if we're asking for a redesign of the building to step back the top floor. I'm not sure if I heard consensus for that. I did hear that idea. Uh... I see that coming from City Council if we don't, so...
I'd either propose setting back the top floor or setting back the entire building off of the road sides. You can put better screening between the building and Asti Road.
Just so you know, this, this is the, the decision body for this project. This is, this is not a recommendation, so... It's not going to the City Council.
I would want it to come back. I would want it to be...
Okay, well, I think, I think it's, it sounds like we're going to suggest some things and, and ask them to work on those and bring them back, and we'll work with them to, uh, to get, to get that back. So, maybe Commissioner AC, the, on this one, um, where, I mean, I, I don't see a ton of opportunity to move the building back too far given behind it.
It's really tough because the way that it's lined, or if there are two buildings behind it are kind of like, it's, having the big one in the front doesn't give it room to move back.
Well, I think, do, do you guys get the sense of what we're, what they're saying here, or do you want something more direct? Did you come up with something? I mean, or...
So, in the spirit of clarity and honesty and the communication that's so critical for the transaction of this type of project, we're going to need it in writing, like, because there's a lot of really good stuff going on and we really appreciate...
I understand.
Designed collaborative, but, um, I have to have something actionable that I can get my engineers and my landscape and everybody to, to work on. So, my request would be whatever is read into the records or however it's produced, it's in such a manner that it is part of the hearing findings, that then we can have a, a, a list of those items, and then we can work in order to come up with the, you know, recommendations that we can produce.
Yeah, fair enough. Well, maybe when we're done, we'll run down our list and, and then we can try to refine that to give them the direction that they need, and then we can, um, put together a letter and, and get it to them as soon as possible. So, for this front building, um...
Ask for heritage-sized screening of vegetation, so a larger tree, and I don't know how many along that, I don't know the appropriate amount. I think that would depend on the type of tree.
So, add a minimum, a more detailed landscape plan for the, I don't, do you guys know the, the setback from the sidewalk and, you can see that planter area. Do you know about how wide that is, or?
It looked like it was about 10 feet on the plan.
Um, is there further direction for this front massing, or, um, are we happy with, with that, or do we want to...
Ironically, the free force of this project is screened really well. It's just this one side, and it's the worst side.
20 feet?
So, okay, so you got 20 feet?
There's 20 feet of view, yeah.
Yeah, then you got 20 feet, which is, that's pretty, I mean, that's...
I have the vegetation plan, so I think the vegetation plan needs to be bolstered.
And that's, that's, that's wider than I thought, so there is some opportunity there to, uh...
Okay, so, when we start with that, that's, um, reasonable?
I'd even recommend maybe fencing along the roadside, at least a small fencing to add more play area for the kids, because that one play area is really not that safe. Um, that's landscaping.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Chair.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, which play area are you referring to?
I'm saying you only have the tot lot, so I'm trying to find more area for the kids to play that might be a little safe, and you might have to throw some kind of screening slash, uh, barrier between the, the project and Asti Road that allows kids to play anywhere, but there's no land available outside of right here, this 20-feet stretch along Building A, or, uh, on the back corner on the east side, right as you're getting into that thick of the vegetation you were talking about earlier, there's that area there, or along the wetlands, along the train tracks are some areas where kids could play potentially.
So, you weren't referring to the community area, like the courtyard that's not safe? You're talking about if they were to go out the, you know, around these buildings?
I'm trying to add to that, because I feel like the community courtyard is extremely small.
Good, thank you.
Chair, could I ask a question of court? Is, is this 20, is this part of your LID, which is the stormwater retention?
Uh, the, the northern corner is part of the, uh, the bio-retention area.
But is it, is this parkway strip that...
There's a portion of that that's jurisdictional waters, considered jurisdictional waters, so that is a, is a no-touch area, and there's a portion that's, that's not considered jurisdictional waters, but it, it definitely conveys water flow through the site in that frontage. Um, definitely, there's opportunity there for additional landscaping, but, um, probably not like a, like a high-use area.
Are the recommendations on the Asti building?
Is it beyond the economics of the deal to put the parking underground?
Yeah, that, uh, what, I think that the water pool or it's, uh, in there.
On the river, I'm sure. Um, so I have, uh, trying to think which ones, so, the, one of them is mechanical equipment. I don't know if that's, it seems like it's all pretty well-screened. Um, lighting, we didn't talk about lighting very much, which, uh, there is a condition that it's, is it dark sky, Rafa? So, there's... Yeah, the dark sky. Uh, the only thing I saw on lighting is the back, um, horseshoe. Um, you could probably use an additional, uh, pole light there just for safety.
Probably going to need it for security.
Just for safety and security, for just location, so where it is on the property and closeness to the homeless.
In the back east corner.
And just, it is dark sky, um, condition? It's dark, yeah, we're dark sky compliant, yeah. It is, so, let's clarify for them, what, what are we looking for with fencing? I think I heard some along the front.
I almost think you need it around the entire property. You need to fence it from the train tracks, the wetlands, the lumberyard, the neighbors who are going to get offended by the kids running up on the front hill, that's the only place to play on, and the road that's right by the freeway.
All right, it's up here, up here. Thank you.
Yeah?
I'm ready to go.
Come on up the hillside.
My, my turn, Phil.
Oh, excuse me.
Talking about the transition of densities from high to medium to low, the hill immediately to the east of the project is zoned, uh, low-density residential, one eight, one-half acre minimum, same as the other, other home of the hill. So, if that, that shouldn't really consider open space permanently. That will eventually be developed, I'm sure, by the owner, because he already has, he, he did a part, did a plan for that several years ago, and he didn't follow through on, but it envisioned about 14 homes on the hilly, on the hilly part to the east and then around to the south and to the, uh, further east. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so back to, um... So, uh, we have, uh, materials and colors. Lori, I think there's a slide that highlights the materials and colors, is that true? Yeah? Okay. Any comments on good, good?
I'm actually okay with that. I, I appreciate that they're trying to reduce the heat on the asphalt, so, yeah.
Um, we have roof lines, which, um, I don't know what would be the best slide to demonstrate the roof. Do you know the roof pitch off the top of your head, or Doug?
If you would stand there, snowfall, we have...
I, I believe it's, uh, four and a half or five to 12, so it's the medium, um, and it's most appropriate for solar orientation primarily.
Thank you. Here, that's a good rendering. I have window placement, which I think, um, Commissioner Springer was asking a little bit about the windows, uh, maybe not so much the placement as the type of windows being used, but...
I'm not particularly thrilled about egress out of the third floor in a major emergency evacuation. I don't, you know, I, I know for sure that the windows in the, in the second bedroom are maybe too small, but they'll, they'll get through that, you know, later, I'm sure. Um, but I do really think about, you know, if there's, if there's a major incident, how are all these people going to get out, especially if they're, if they're expected to not have vehicles? Not just get out of the facility, but leave.
Okay, any comments on the third-story windows on the Asti building? Do you like to do anything about getting more soundproofing, or?
Yeah, I think that, um, that, that point was made, it's a good point that, you know, it is above our, the sound barrier and freeway, um, probably having a higher STC rating at the, at the top location.
By the foundation.
Yeah. I'd say like a STC 32, 34 is pretty typical for apartment units on, on these roads.
So, higher window rating on windows on the third floor facing freeway?
Yeah.
Is that fair? Okay.
Building A.
Building A. And that will likely become a condition of approval. Uh, we may have to talk to them about it, but you wouldn't necessarily see that on a plan, but we can do a condition that we can include that when it's plan-checked, check that. The only other one really on the list is, is the parking area. Um, Lori, maybe you could go back to the beginning of the, the site plan. Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to see, but...
Is that a, uh, Kevin?
Yeah, that, I think that's the best one. Thanks, Lori.
I think the city's extremely liable here. I think we put ourselves in a position where, uh, they are going to park on Asti Road, and we have to be extremely strict in removing vehicles because it's unsafe to allow people to park along Asti Road. I think we're completely undersized in our parking. I think we're allowing an exemption that would be great for a mass transit community had that mass transit been in place, but I think we're five to 10 years too early for this, but I think this is a perfect idea once the train's in place. I just don't think we're there yet, and I don't think we're ready for e-bikes or a biking situation to downtown safely, and I think that the city needs to think not just parking, but the safety connection, and the developer needs to maybe assist us in connecting safely to other city streets, and that includes First Street and includes down by, uh, you know, Citrus Fair Drive. They need to be connected safely, and I don't think we should allow this project to move forward without, uh, allowing that safety to be cons, addressed. I mean, that safety, this is extremely unsafe. 200 people going to be thrown into this area that looks so rural and nobody's there, but we all know the, the traffic is not safe in that street.
I wholeheartedly agree, especially at Citrus Fair, where, you know, this is the, the assumption that downtown is where most of their necessities are, but that's not realistic. Everything's necessities are, that, this often, with the, with the exception of schools, right? Everything else, where they need to go, they need to go down Citrus Fair, and they're expecting not to have vehicles, and that's kind of a blind term when people are coming 45 miles an hour down there and you're trying to make a left turn out of there. It's very dangerous, so imagine being a kid trying to cross the, the road there and go to Washington School. That's extremely dangerous, and they should have moved it softly.
It's unfortunate for the developer and the owner, because I, I think this, the T, the T, the land is meant for us to have mass transit type of housing, and to have affordable housing in this location is perfect. I just think that the city, we, we need to address the safety of this road even without this project included in that discussion, so I think we need to address safety there, and I think that putting this project in this area that is already unsafe increases that safety risk, and I think we're just adding to fuel to the fire. I mean, it's unsafe.
To the Chair, why, why don't, how about the direction on the safety? I, I can work with the applicants and our engineer. I don't know that we know any answers right now, and I think the city manager had a good idea about a potential crosswalk there that could be, uh, helpful to the sidewalk, um, on the west side, but how about, uh, for this one, instead, I don't know that we can give them real clear direction, but I can work with them and work with our engineer at Coastland and see what we can come up with. And, um, you know, it could be potential CIP projects. We do, uh, we apply for CDBG projects every year, um, for sidewalks and things like the Hillsburg Avenue, uh, lighted crossing, so it's a small, it's a slow incremental process, and I agree with you, it is unsafe, and, you know, we, there's a lot of areas in town, so it's, a lot of things are trying to get attention, but there may be some easy ones that we can work with the developer on, and maybe I could bring back a list of things that we could consider, um, if that's acceptable.
You could take one of the lights from the south end in town and put that on Asti Road. I'm all for that one. Sorry, bad, bad joke. I know, a little too early. It's not midnight yet.
I think it would be wise to have a, I know there was a traffic, um, study included in the package, but I don't really think it adequately addressed the future issues that this project is going to generate, and particularly with respect to the schools, uh, and traffic getting kids here from school. I, uh, we don't even have, I mean, the bus service doesn't even go on Asti Road, let alone service, you know, their services, the minimalist anyway, but, um, yeah, it's, it's not a transit operation. I mean, it's not really well-served by transit, even though it's in a transit district.
Well, that's it for the list. Um, if you want, I'm going to...
Did you add purple pipe on that list? Perfect.
I think I have a more question, maybe it's a question for Alex. If our schools can't issue us a will-serv letter for the planned participants, um, what can we do with that? If, if they're planning this community and our hands are tied, basically, that we have to approve it, and like, just like the parking, because they're using, um, the density bonus law to forego parking, so we're just kind of have to say, okay, what can we do if our schools say we can't take in these kids? And essentially, when we think about if it's 50% agricultural worker, which is my understanding, that a good portion of those kids might be ESL students who need additional services. So, what, what, um, power do we have when it comes to the fact that our infrastructure is saying we can't take on these, these students?
Yeah, and, and that's a, a great question. Unfortunately, I do not have a, a great answer. Um, under, under state law, uh, state law provides that the way to mitigate the impact on, uh, that development has on school facilities or the need, uh, for new facilities is through the payment of school facilities. Fees, eh, and state law sets, um, as you heard, I, I believe it was the superintendent, uh, say earlier, you know, those, those fees are unfortunately, they're capped and they're, and they're not particularly adequate, but that, all the city's authority really to do is require the payment of those fees. That's what unfortunately state law, all state law allows the city to mandate.
So what I understand is that even though our school's saying, we cannot serve these students, these projected students, it's irrelevant to us? I'm just trying to get a case for everybody who's in here, make sure that everybody understands that we're, that's what I'm saying, is that it doesn't matter if our school.
That's not, that's not our understanding.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please, microphone.
Thank you so much again, Jennifer Gibb with King Consulting. Um, our firm works very closely on developer mitigation and SB fifty, which was passed in nineteen ninety-eight, went from, um, prior to that, there was Proposition thirteen in nineteen eighty-seven, and then prior to that, uh, school districts levied fees on an annual basis based on their needs. So when Proposition thirteen came in place in nineteen eighty-seven, then there was the two percent cap on the taxes, and then in nineteen ninety-eight, what happened with SB fifty was it put the onus on the district to mitigate the impact. So as I stated earlier, we would really appreciate the planning commission's support that this project be approved, um, with the conditional, uh, approving of our mitigation agreement with this developer. That helps us with the variance of the delta, um, from the level one fee to the actual true impact of this development. So again, to your point, um, there are, there potentially, if it is a lower socioeconomic or ESL, those absolutely, those students have a higher need. Our state of California funds, uh, on local control funding formula, which absolutely, that model says students at a higher percentage risk, the state will fund those operationally to educate them because they need more services, they too are going to be generated from this development. So, um, in our study that we're going to, you know, deep dive later this month, we have the demographics, community demographics that we'd love to share with you, we have the enrollment projections, we have the socioeconomics, all of this that supports that the kids that will be generated by the development will absolutely have an impact. And we need to work together to help mitigate that impact, and it absolutely can be with, off and above and beyond the statutory level one fee of four dollars and eight cents per square foot because of SB fifty. So we need to work together to help our students in our community mitigate that impact.
So could I ask?
Question?
So what specifically I'm asking the committee should do?
Um, make the approval of this project contingent upon a mitigation agreement, um, with the school district. Yeah.
You can addition on?
I have nothing, I, I mean, my statement doesn't change. Certainly if the school district, um, could provide sort of, uh, any authority that's, you know, to show that the city can require such a condition, we would certainly, uh, uh, consider that. And if, if, you know, the city has that authority, I'll certainly, you know, we're certainly changed the advice I just gave. I'm not aware of any authority the city has to require, uh, more than the maximum fees allowed under state law. But of course, if this school district, um, knows of authority that I'm not aware of, we will of course, you know, take that and, and change the advice we're giving you, um, on that matter.
Thank you. There we were.
So for that one, I'll work with the school district and Alex, and, uh, we'll see what, what, uh, what we can come up with on that. Um, so if, if you're okay, I've gone through the whole list, uh, maybe we can read those back, see if you're good, make sure the applicant understands, and then we can bring this project back with, uh, amendments based on what we've discussed. If that's okay, chair.
Yeah, please.
Rob, you up for it?
What I asked him for?
Yeah, if you. I don't know if that one works, try that one.
So what I heard the commission seemed to come to agreement on is that, uh, there's a need for large, large trees in the front of the building, block the view from the freeway, defense the entire property, add lighting to the back east corner, soundproof the windows on the third floor facing the freeway on building A. And to, I don't know about this one, but fix the pedestrian safety issues at First Street and Asti and Citrus Fair and Asti.
I think for that one, I'm gonna work with, uh, our engineer and, and come up with some ideas and work with the developer and see if, what's possible and, um, what could be, you know, potentially a CIP or a future project, but to focus on what could be done now, um, to make it safer in the area.
I would, for the developer, I have the responsibility, they need to connect the city's sidewalk system, but really, they're going to their property, so the city's responsibility is to connect with them. Can you just coordinate efforts?
And the only thing, I, I got additional, is, uh, back to my, Bob Jordan training me on this twenty years ago, is thinking about the kids and the tot lot, we need more space for the kids somehow.
Potential for elimination of the baji and making exchange for more kids.
Something, just more, more space for the kids.
Does that sound, uh, yeah, I don't know, this one's not working. Yeah, and here's another idea out of left field, what if you flipped the V of the buildings B and C and flipped the V to match the eastern corner? So the V was on the eastern corner, then you have the whole inner center for more children area, or more play area. So the V actually comes to the backside of the property, so you have the A building and B and C are back here and the V that way, right, right now they're like this, so if you switch the V like that, you have a lot more of a center area.
Who's data?
Just a thought, I don't know if you've already looked at that.
The general theme is more kids stuff, and, uh, maybe that was a good idea on how to achieve that, but.
Yeah, just increasing the quality of life, I mean, a common area, uh, or at least the pri, the, what is it? The private open space is extremely low, it's sixty square feet. So this might help give a little more open space to the individuals, give them better quality of life. Other than reducing units, could you also do that?
That the comment was made for the, because they had to have an adult, um, centered activity as well, like in addition to the playground, maybe the basketball court is a better idea?
Yeah.
Would get a lot more use, the half court.
True, or multi-use court or?
The napa, yeah, the napa.
Tipple ball in the middle of our development. Too much bouncing. Okay, so anything else? No, we're good, okay, so we're gonna invite you, invite you guys back.
We'll get you these in writing and, uh, you can get to work on them, and we'll work together and, and schedule you on a, another meeting.
Is that enough?
No.
No, only because we gotta see how long it takes for you guys to. Yeah, I mean. It's, I think you got pretty good direction, so, um, it's gonna be really as, as how fast you can make those changes and bring it back and.
So we're not gonna take a serious look at the traffic, have we even done?
Well, that's up to the city.
No, the state schools and that whole issue, I mean.
If you were to add a comment, I.
Is, uh, no further study gonna be undertaken about the impact on traffic and getting kids here from school?
Yes.
Well, I mean, um, the project is exempt from CECL, and it's, it has the, I mean, there's a, an eight-hundred-page legal opinion about that, uh, we could ask them. I don't think, I don't think they're obligated to do that based on the CECL exemption, that's, that's my opinion. There, there may be, there may be other opinions, and I, I'm happy to work with them to see if, if that's, um, something they'd be willing to do. I, I don't know that we can compel them to do that, just based on the fact that they are qualified for a CECL exemption under the state exemption law, so. But, you know, I, I'm willing to, to work with them to see if, if they're willing to enhance their traffic study.
Obviously, there are many things that's critical that makes it less safe. Something to slow traffic and allow people to, to cross those.
It seems like traffic calming on Asti is something that would be, cause people drive fast, cause it's built for speed and it's.
Maybe as we remove that unusable railroad track, something there.
But, yeah, I mean, it took a fatality to get that flashing light on South Florida Boulevard, so I would hate to have that, you know, press paid first before we do something about it.
I would also advise the developers to look at funding, additional funding. I, I actually agree with both bundling your funding, and there is funding available for energy-efficient appliances for a project like this that will pay for the entirety of your appliances to electrify them and remove gas from your infrastructure, so there are opportunities of getting efficient energy appliances in your project. Snowmuckling Power has an advanced energy build program for that. Just plug it.
Sure.
Death plug.
Okay. Are we good, applicant, you guys are good? Yes. Okay. Okay. Okay, with that said, then we are gonna close item three and move on to other business, which we have none, which puts us on to planner's report and communication.
Yeah, chair, the only real thing I have is for the December seventh meeting, we're looking to have our proposed zoning, uh, downtown zoning updates that we, remember we had the consultant come in, Placeworks? And we have that in pretty good draft form, and the, the goal right now is to get that on the seventh. And, um, that's really the only thing we have teed up, and, you know, if these, these folks potentially could, could be on the seventh if, uh, if that works out, but, uh, the downtown stuff is very likely going to be on our December seventh.
Okay, thank you, anything from commissioners staff? Okay, seeing none, I will call this meeting, thank you.
Thank you.